12th, 2019, Public Hearing Open. Role Call. I'll do the role call since our secretary is not here. John Zuccarelli.
Present.
Dennis Vinnery.
Present.
Robin Long.
Present.
And Glorian Burke.
Present.
And Jackie LaFaro, Chair. We have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, there's no necessary reading of the documents since this is a continuation from the last public hearing. We have a list of people who have signed in and I will... So you don't have to sign in anywhere. You've signed in, which saves time. So I'm going to call people. Marcella Silverman, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne. Yes, of course. Let's hear from the applicant, Wayne Bruin.
Good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin. I'm Shea Marsinski-Bruin, Southampton, New York, on behalf of Southampton Day Camp Realty, the applicant and owner of the property. The principal, Jay Jacobs, is with us tonight as well as several of our consultants to answer questions and they may have something also to offer. Tonight is a continuation of the public hearing. It's required by statute. We were required to repost the property. I provided an affidavit of posting with your counsel.
That's a good order.
That being said, this is a continuation of our site plan application. As this board knows, this has had a long history of not only before this board but before the town. Preceding this was an entire secret process where this board was the lead agency, whereupon you reviewed an environmental impact statement and adopted a finding statement, secret finding statement. Thereafter, the matter was proceeded before the zoning board of appeals and the zoning board of appeals adopted their own secret finding statement based on the EIS as well as the decision. There was a challenge of that decision by our neighbors and the court dismissed that challenge by the neighbors as well. We then proceeded here with our site plan application. The site plan complies in all respect to the finding statement that this board prepared. We submit that it meets all the site plan standards. I don't want to belabor exactly all the details, but we're here to answer any particular questions regarding that site plan. Includes not only the site plan, detailed landscape plan and other plans for the improvements that are proposed. The October 24th meeting raised some questions, which I would ask your indulgence, David Wortman, who prepared, was one of the preparers of the EIS processes, here with us this evening. He just wants to make a comment before you proceed to other comments. David?
Okay. David Wortman.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Wortman with the firm VHB, environmental consultant to the applicant. As Wayne said, I'd just like a brief moment to make a statement. He submitted something in writing which covers all the detail and I'll be brief in the interest of time. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Essentially, the reason I'm taking a moment tonight is to note that at our most recent hearing in October, there were many comments raised with respect to the proposed facility and its impacts on Little Fresh Pond, among other items, virtually all of which have been heard previously by this board and had been addressed in the extensive EIS during the secret process that Mr. Bruin mentioned. One of the commenters in particular, Dr. Gobler, focused on the conditions of Little Fresh Pond in his comments. He referenced a study that was recently released by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, which is entitled, which we believe is the report entitled "The Revised Draft Subwatersheds Waste Water Plan," dated August 2019, in his comments. And that plan utilizes the CDM Smith hydrologic model, which Dr. Gobler described, in his words, at the last meeting as "the most sophisticated groundwater model for all of Long Island." You'll recall that potential impacts to Little Fresh Pond was a central theme to the environmental impact statement. It included an extensive analysis of the potential impacts. It included various site-specific data regarding groundwater conditions, groundwater flows and the potential impacts to Little Fresh Pond. Nonetheless, I mentioned this study as it was raised at the last meeting because upon review of that study, it contains a map identifying the groundwater contributing areas of big and little fresh ponds as part of its sub watershed analysis. And what's most interesting and notable about that, and there's a copy enclosed with the written version, it's that the entire camp facility, existing and proposed, is clearly shown to be located outside of the groundwater contributing area of big or little fresh ponds. And you can see that figure for yourselves there. There's a very small portion of the site. I'll refer to this plan. It's in the western neck area that's immediately adjacent to the pond where there is a portion in the groundwater contributing area. However, the rest of the subject property is clearly shown as being outside of that. And I just would like to note that the CDM Smith model is the same model that was referenced in comments in the past in Mr. Pio Lombardo's report that was submitted to the record and that was addressed in the EIS. I'd also like to note that the results of this model and the sub watershed analysis are totally consistent with the results of the site-specific analysis that was done for the purposes of the EIS. And for those reasons, I'd respectfully submit that this information is really not new as it relates to this application. We've studied Little Fresh Pond and its impact, the potential impacts of the project. It's consistent with what was analyzed in the EIS, but as well, it's consistent with the findings that were made by this board, of which there were multiple findings addressing the potential for the project to impact Little Fresh Pond. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you had about this material or any other aspect of the project for environmental impacts. But I would also respectfully say that the applicant, myself and the team, trust that this board will continue to focus its efforts on the site plan-related matters that are before the board tonight. But again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this.
I just have a quick question.
Of course.
This sub watershed waste water plan is a study, is it not? It's still in draft form?
That is correct.
Okay. I ask you that because we were not permitted to use it in another situation prior to this. Do you know when it will be complete and when it will be in its final form?
I don't personally have information about the expected date for the final report to come out. It's titled "The Revised Draft Subwatersheds Waste Water Plan," and so I do acknowledge that it's considered a draft study for Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Sure. Folks.
Any other questions from anybody on the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we just have one other speaker, Mr. Pio Lombardo.
Pio Lombardo, President Lombardo Associates, Environmental Engineers. We have been involved with the impacts of the proposed day camp on Little Fresh Pond, both for the Little Freshwater Pond Association back in 2012 as well as the applicant back in 2016. And what I just passed out is a little presentation that really summarizes the work that we've done over the past, I guess, nine years. And not to inundate you with too much paper, but just for your reference, what I've reproduced is and provide you copies of both the 2012 report that we prepared for the association as well as the 2016 report that we prepared for the applicant, so that you can understand how our analysis evolved and what the findings are. So again, our work started in 2012. Just for background, we've been involved with lake water quality assessments since 1971 and wrote water quality model for US EPA, that's widely used. And as you know, as from the work at the Canoe Place Inn, we've been involved with groundwater transport and the use of permeable reactive barriers for nitrogen and phosphorus removal. What I'd like to point your attention to is a couple of figures on that presentation, and I'll try to be as brief as possible because the picture tells the story as well as the data is what drives our analysis and our conclusions. So the first figure that I'd like you to examine...
Is it this? Is it this form?
Yes, please. That the 2012 report contains, but the essential portion of our analysis, as you'll see, is on the left-hand side.
What page are you...
Okay.
I can't see that. What page are you on?
My apologies, they're not numbered, but it's page four.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And you'll see the reference to the 2012 report at the top left-hand corner. Okay? And in the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see the groundwater flow maps, travel times that were published back in 2011, which at that time, the model suggested that the groundwater flowed from the campsite towards the pond. And however, to the right of that, you will see the actual data that USGS collected with the model was based upon. And remember, models have a lot of parameters and there's a lot of judgments that are made. You'll see that there, those data points that show, that's 7.7 underneath number 52649. That 7.7 is the groundwater elevation that the USGS measured. And you'll see the 7.9, that's between Little Fresh Pond and the larger Fresh Pond, that's the elevation of the groundwater at that point. And then to the left of that, you'll see a point that shows it at being at 5.4. So it's easy to surmise that gee whiz, the groundwater is flowing to the left, which is to the west in that area. Now, that dotted line is the USGS's estimate of the groundwater divide. So in other words, water that's to the right of that would flow to the northeast and waters that are to the left of that would flow to the west, northwest area. That dotted line is a judgment call that was made by the researchers at the USGS. Based upon that, we had concluded that gee whiz, there could be an impact by the property on the pond. So subsequent in our recommendations, if you look at the next page, you'll see that we presented there the data that's been published for, you know, quite a number of years that showed that the pond has been eutrophic since 2004. The chlorophyll A is really the algae concentration and that solid line is anything above that would indicate eutrophic conditions. And again, you can see it's been in bad shape for quite a long time. And what we recommended at that time was that the town and the association should advocate for no net phosphorus increase associated with any new activities in the watershed so that the bad situation would not get worse. Again, the Little Fresh Pond has been highly eutrophic since 2004. Ponds do not get eutrophic overnight. It's a slow process typically accelerated by human activity. The properties around the pond, from our knowledge, were constructed and occupied since the 50s in general. Okay? Now, it's our opinion that the sediments of the pond are likely the significant cause of the eutrophic conditions. And sediments are a legacy issue. The sediments reflect really what's happened over long periods of time as the algae die, basically fall to the bottom of the pond and then nutrients are released during certain conditions from that. So you'll see that other graph at the bottom right-hand corner of the figure, that's the total phosphorus levels. And you'll see back in 2004, they were extremely high, well over standards of good water quality for a pond. Again, the pond's already been eutrophic for a long time. The next page illustrates our findings from the 2016 report. The genesis of that report is that we basically had a agreement, a proposal with the owner to create a no-net phosphorus contribution from the development. That's the reason why we were retained and involved in the project on a second time. So what we did was really install these wells. There were four wells, as you can see from the figure, as well as a gauge was installed on the pond to be able to measure the elevation of the pond. They were all surveyed in. I measured them personally. And the numbers you can see at those five different locations indicates the level of groundwater in the pond over those time periods. And as you can deduce from the numbers, you know, when you look at them, the groundwater from the site does not flow to the pond, it flows to the west. Basically, it's flowing towards that small pond that's just southwest of Little Fresh Pond and flowing north, west-northwest along the property. Pretty similarly, if you go back to the figure from the USGS, that dotted line, based upon the data that was collected, just moves a little bit such that the property now is on the different side of that dotted line than was inferred at that time. And that line, that line at that time was a judgment call. It was not a measure. Data, there's no data that indicated precise that location, whereas the 2016 effort is data that is precise. The groundwater was re-sampled during the project predominantly because the first time it was sampled, the groundwater was not filtered. And you're supposed to filter the groundwater before you send it to the lab because there can be sediment in the water that distorts the data. So the statements made that it was some kind of, you know, other reasons why the data was collected secondly is doesn't really, there's no basis for that besides the fact that it was unfiltered the first time and it was filtered the second time. Now, the next page just points to the issue on the, and some of the key observations. We see no new data that's been produced to refute the 2016 findings on groundwater flow paths. There's been a lot of talk, but there's been no data. And it would have cost a lot less than, I'm sure, legal fees to have collected that data. To really want to know, if you really care about a water body, a pond, you have to know which way the water's flowing to be able to understand what's occurring. The other issue of significance is that there was a lot of statements made that groundwater flow mimics surface elevations. That's very incorrect for what we refer to as an unconfined aquifer, such as exists on Long Island, Cape Cod and other very sandy areas. And there's an illustration that I've provided there for Georgia Capon, where the, on the left side, that is the true watershed boundaries for Georgia Capon. Unfortunately, I can see it didn't reproduce well, but based upon the surface elevation, researchers have defined the watershed boundaries for Georgia Capon that is much greater than it really is. So when you're in an unconfined aquifer, in other words, there's nothing that holds the water in a specific location, you can't use surface elevations to determine which way the groundwater's flow. You can do that in what's called confined aquifers. That's a different, and that's sort of the standard process. The next page and the next two pages provide examples of that type of analysis that was incorrectly done both for Lake Agawam. The figure on the left shows the true watershed boundaries. The figure on the right shows the watershed boundaries if they were based upon surface topography. And then the more dramatic example is on the next page in Martha's Vineyard, where in the lower left-hand corner, you can see the groundwater boundaries are quite complex and no way do they mimic the surface topography, which is the topography shown on the upper right-hand corner of the figure. And again, I just wanted to provide the science behind how these things work in that these allegations that were made about surface elevation and groundwater flow are scientifically incorrect. And then lastly, the last slide illustrates a phosphorus balance that was prepared for Georgia Capon, which shows that the sediment flux is 61% of the phosphorus contributions to the pond. In other words, the sediment is the elephant in the room. Waste water is important, but it's the sediments that need to be addressed for that pond to be restored. It's not unusual, it's frankly very common, for ponds that become eutrophic, that the sediments take over as the influence. And frankly, in geologic time, ponds turn into meadows and fields as they get filled up with organic matter that accumulates over, again, geologic time. And humans just accelerate the process by adding nutrients, whether it's from wastewater or other sources. So that's my summary and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the short objective was to show the history of what has been done and the actual data. And I would urge you to focus predominantly on the data that was collected in the 2016 report because that's the only real data that exists. Everything else is everybody just talking and making sort of statements and models are models, but data is what drives science. So be happy to answer your questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo.
So as a reminder, we're here to talk about the site plan. Everything you heard from Pio and Mr. Wortman is just basically a reiteration of the documents that were already submitted to this board and duly reviewed and considered during the entire secret process. The site plan elements were to focus on are the access and the landscaping and the other materials as normally required. The layout and design was duly considered by this board. Interestingly, the first meeting we ever had with this board, your board had made some recommendations which eventually made its way into it. The most important was the recognition that there was some existing improvements on the property, one of which being the tennis court that's literally on the northerly property line, should be relocated to the interior of the site. And of course, that is one of the elements of our proposed site plan, along with the buffering of that area along the north side. So we await to hear any questions or comments that the board has and hopefully you'll hear comments and we'll consider them all proceeding tonight and close the hearing and have a review of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. No more people from your side. Okay. So now, Marcella Silverman.
I'd like to also shake up the order a little bit and have Dr. Chris Gobler speak after me.
After you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Bragman and I represent the Little Fresh Pond Association, which we've discussed before, but I want to remind the board that it's more than 30 years old, has and its members have been in existence long before this application. Out of an interest in protecting the health of the pond and the related wetlands and drainage, I want to emphasize the fact, contrary to what Wayne Bruin just said to you, that site plan is a lot more than just moving buildings and roads around. And his attempt to limit your discretion in that manner is contrary to what Southampton Town Law is and it's contrary to SECREA law as well. Section 33182 of the Site Plan Code of the Town of Southampton indicates that the planning board has to, has to take into account, shall take into account, the public health, public safety and public welfare that the site plan presents and any issues in the site plan that impact public health, public safety or public welfare. Also the comfort and convenience of the public in general and residents of the immediate neighborhood in particular. And you're authorized to prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards as may be required in order that the result, to the maximum extent possible, to the maximum extent possible, furthers that expressed intent of site plan review. And then it lists a number of specific objectives that are to be accomplished, reviewed and accomplished in a site plan review. The reason I say this tonight is because site plan review is not, it's not a rubber stamp and that's really what Mr. Bruin is trying to suggest to you, that you made findings under SECREA and that means your job is over, the deal is done, you got to go with those findings. That is entirely incorrect. SECREA does not change, the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, in case anybody in the audience needs to know what it means, does not change the existing jurisdiction of local agencies, even agencies that were involved in a secret review. And what that means is that it does not negate, upset or cancel your obligations to review this under the written site plan standards. And in accordance with those standards, you're authorized to impose substantive conditions to ensure that the policies of site plan review are protected and fulfilled. And what this means is that you retain... And what this means is that you retain separate site plan powers, and they are defined separately in your site plan law, and they have a different standard of review than your SECRE review. The SECRE review is an impact analysis. And what you're doing under SECRE is you're essentially saying, you know, these are the impacts, and we've mitigated the impacts as much as we can. That's essentially what your findings say. That is not tantamount to a mandate to approve a project. And in fact, you can adopt SECRE standards that are findings that say they've mitigated to the maximum extent practicable, and you still have the power to deny the application on policy grounds and on a factual basis that relates to it. So to put that in simple parlance, the fact that you did a SECRE review and made findings does not mean that this application is in compliance with the entirely separate standards and policies of site plan review. So SECRE compliance does not make site plan review redundant, and it doesn't authorize you to rubber stamp this because it's all done. It isn't all done. In addition, as long as I'm on the topic of SECRE, I want to, I want to suggest to you that there is a legal remedy to deal with the issue of newly discovered evidence. And I would suggest to you that the fact that Little Fresh Pond, for the first time in its history, has gone from eutropic to the worst blue-green algae outbreak in the history of Long Island is newly discovered evidence. And under SECRE, which is still applicable to this case, you as a lead agency are authorized to require a supplemental EIS, environmental impact statement, limited to the specific adverse environmental impacts that were not adequately addressed in the EIS which you were dealing with. And I would suggest that is precisely what's happened here. We have newly discovered information. It's serious enough that the governor of the state of New York declared it an emergency and allocated $82 million to localities to get to work immediately to figure out what we can do about blue-green algae. This is certainly newly discovered information, it's certainly a change in circumstances, and it authorizes this board to require the preparation of a supplemental EIS in the case of newly discovered information based upon its importance and relevance, and based upon the present state of information in the EIS. Well, we didn't know about this when you made your findings. Nobody did. This happened after you made your findings, and it's damn serious. This is no joke. This pond's health and life and future is now clearly endangered. In addition, when you do that, if you choose to do that, the last date to file the EIS can be extended, that's explicitly stated in SECRE. You can make new findings a fact if you so desire. The idea behind SECRE is that an arbitrary time limit doesn't cut you off from looking at a serious environmental impact. Obviously, the latter is more important than a procedural deadline. So those, that is an avenue that is available to you under SECRE. But you also have sufficient standards under the site plan review that can enable you to evaluate the adequacy of this plan. Now, we previously discussed some of those standards. We talked about, the last time we were here, we had a conversation about the fact that your site plan standards require that this applicant demonstrate to you that his plan pays due regard to water bodies, and that's an explicit standard under site plan review. It's not a road, it's not a driveway, it's not shuffling a building around. It's an environmental requirement. And I want to emphasize to you that it is not my burden to prove to you that this camp has harmed Little Fresh Pond. It is the applicant's burden to prove to you that if he, if he accelerates, if he escalates the number of people that are going to be at this camp every day in the hottest part of the summer when these algae blooms happen, going from when we started this case, or when we started seeing documentation back in 2011, this was a tennis club with 35 members in it. Now they're talking about a camp, they've changed the numbers around. If I mistake the number, I'm not doing it intentionally, your recollection will tell you what the correct number is, but it's somewhere north of 400 campers. Suffolk County Department of Health Services, I believe, attributes a flow of 15 gallons per day per camper. He's going to have, I've heard, 90 full-time residents living there during the summertime. So you're talking about a dramatic, dramatic increase in the output of nitrates and phosphates. They've made a big deal about the fact that they came in and did some work on their septic system. All they did on their septic system was they put in septic tanks. And based upon what they did, they claimed, and I have the document here, a consultant, their hydrologist consultant claimed that it was likely that if the numbers remained consistent for the camp, they were going to drop the input of nitrates like 50%. It's a ridiculous claim, given the fact that back in 2011, when, when the report was submitted to the county, the use of that site was a 35-member tennis club. And there are a number of statements like that that are exaggerated, which I'll get to, and I specifically want to talk about water impacts. And I reminded the board that from time to time, and I'm not sure this holds today, that the applicant confirmed that the use of the pond wasn't involved in the camp, but now it appears to be unclear. That's another, that raises another question about whether camp activities pay due regard to the health and safety of the nearby water body. I was happy to hear P.O. Lombardo talk about how he filtered the samples of the water, and he said, you know, that's what you're supposed to do, quite the contrary. And you've had evidence in front of you from our hydrologist who indicated, and we brought Dr. Goglu here tonight, and he can, I believe, confirm this, that samples that have precipitate in them, where you're going to try to find out whether they're nitrates or phosphates, you do not filter them. Filtering those samples has the obvious impact that it had in this case. The first set of samples that they took while camp was in session and didn't filter, they admitted indicated that water was flowing toward the pond. That's, that was what the results told them. Then they took a second set of samples, and they filtered them to get rid of the precipitate. And I think we talked about this the last time I was here. I was describing how you don't filter samples because it removes evidence of nitrates and phosphates. You use a different manner of drawing the water out of the pond. You do it by, rather, out of the well that you're sampling. You do it with low volume, low pressure sampling, and you develop the well before you take the samples. In other words, you run the well and you get it, you know, you draw water out for a period of days, and that way you don't have to filter them. And we suggested to you, and we suggest today, that filtering the samples is contrary to scientific protocol, and it was calculated to produce the results that they produced. It was clean, and then they went with the second set of samples and never referred to the first set again. I suggest to you that they have a burden to take proper sampling so that they can prove to you that boosting the enrollment of this camp from 35, the children of 35 members to 475 with 90 to 100 counselors living there full-time, doesn't do anything and never reaches the pond. When Bob DeLuca was here, I thought he made an excellent point, and said, every other use that they refer to around this pond, they concede is going into the pond. The houses, the septics, oh, they go into the pond. But what a lucky coincidence, what an unbelievable coincidence, that the only use that doesn't go into the pond is, is the most intensive use that they want to put in, a camp with 475 people, 90 to 100 counselors living there all the time. It defies common sense, frankly. And the blue-green algae is a strong indicator that there's a correlation between their activities and what's going on, what's going on in the, in the pond. We also talked, I'm going to get back to the ponds, I want to talk about one of their hydrology reports, and I want to talk about grandfathering, but we also talked about whether the traffic accesses were adequate. And your, again, your site plan standards say that they have to be adequate as to alignment, visibility, and in proper relationship to intersections, and in conformance to traffic safety considerations. That's not a standard like, that says we can do the best we can. They can say that in a SECRE review. They can say, we've mitigated traffic safety issues the best we can. That's not good enough for your site plan review, because your site plan review says it has to conform to traffic safety considerations, it has to have alignment visibility in proper relationship to the roads, and the roads have to have a proper relationship to intersections. And we ticked off the evidence that you reviewed, not to try to get you to redo your findings under SECRE, but because they're relevant. And what, what the SECRE review disclosed is that buses do not have adequate site distance to make turns out of the site. We told, we reminded you that in the SECRE report that they submitted the EIS, they improperly determined how many people turn north and how many people turn south. They overemphasized the number of people turning north because it's the southern turn, I think I have those directions correct, that poses the greater difficulties. And I recall, and you may recall, our traffic expert who said, when you estimate how you're turning out of a, out of a site, you base it on past history of traffic on the site, and instead of doing 50/50, which is what the data suggested, they did this 90/10 split, completely arbitrary, and they did it for the purpose of making it seem like turns were less of a problem than they were. We also, I want to talk to you a little bit about landscaping and screening, because that's a, that's a new topic that I hadn't discussed with you before. And under Section 33182(c) landscaping and screening, it requires that all recreation areas, parking, service, and similar areas are screened at all times from the view of adjacent residential district, and that landscaping is in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood, and that it enhances the character of the town. We haven't seen any landscaping. They talk about what a great job they did because they eliminated that tennis court in the north, but they leave this big open question about what they're doing there, and it appears that they've turned it into a larger-scale playing field that's extremely invasive to the northern neighbors. It violates the standard of landscaping and screening. This is a separate standard, and I just read you what's required, that's under your site plan rules. They also have a standard about lighting, that all outdoor lighting is such that the nature and character of it is arranged as to preclude the projection of direct light and glare onto adjoining properties. This remains a problem that they haven't addressed and that they need to address. We also raised issues with noise impacts. The plan obscures its intention, as I said, in removing the two northern tennis courts and replacing them with play courts. It's labeled as largely revegetated, not clear what that means, but I'm told by the neighbors that that's a playground and often used as a soccer field. So instead of de-intensifying, you know, the noise sources, they're intensifying it. You know, tennis court is a lot less intrusive than a soccer field where 15 or 20 kids can play and shout. So they've obscured what they're doing. We don't know if it's a playground, a sports court. And frankly, it should be a quiet zone because the plan is going to increase noise. There's no screening of the swimming pools, and there's no screening north to where the, or I'm sorry, the screening that's proposed to the north where the houses are is totally inadequate, and it should be redone and discussed publicly. They also don't address the site plan standard on noise. Public address system or sound systems are supposed to be such that no sound from the system is audible to adjoining property or to adjacent streets. That's stricter than your noise code. And you know that they've got a train circulating on the property, blowing its whistle, and the evidence, which was undisputed in the record, was that it was hidden away during the noise evaluation, and one of their employees gave us an affidavit that said that they rearranged activities so that they'd get lower noise readings, they stopped the train while the noise readings were going on, which is effectively activity that amounts to a fraud against the planning board. And there is a general noise pollution standard that still is applicable, that this board should consider, which says that using or operating any other machine or device that reproduces sound is prohibited in a manner that would disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighboring inhabitants, and in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the area building structure in which that device is located. We have no evidence on that. It's not my burden to tell you or prove to you that I have a noise problem. It's their obligation to prove to the board that they've taken into account the noise standards, and that they are not going to produce noise in violation of this code or the site plan standard that I just referred you to. And the residents are already experiencing noise problems, and when they call the police, they basically laugh them off and say, we're not going to do anything. And the soccer field, as I said, is a serious intrusion. I wanted to, I want to talk about an issue that's got a little more complexity, and that is the grandfathering issue, because I think it's been presented in a manner that's a little misleading. First of all, I think it's important to note that Suffolk County Department of Health Services, great agency, they do great work. I'm not critical of the work that they do, but they don't make your zoning decisions for you. Suffolk County Department of Health Services isn't approving a site plan on this property. It's the planning board that's, that's doing that. And so grandfathering, the idea that they have said that they have a high rate of septic flow that's permitted, is not a town zoning approval, it is not a site plan approval, and it doesn't show environmental compliance. It's a calculation, and frankly, it's a calculation that's completely mystifying, because it is based entirely on one document submitted by Mr. Butler, their engineer, who properly labeled 12 cottages, I may have that number wrong, it may be slightly more than that, as cottages. They were bungalows, it was a bungalow colony, and they were, they were permitted as temporary residence, residences, which have a very low septic flow. All of the buildings under the state sanitary code together as temporary residences have a flow of 2,100 gallons per day, not 9,300 gallons per day. So how did they get to 9,300 gallons per day? Pretty simple. Mr. Butler, on the inside pages of the correct description of what the uses were, labeled them as dormitories. That's how it happened. He called them dormitories. That made the occupancy way higher, and it made the flow rates way higher. Now, the reason that I bring this up to you is not because they're entitled to it because they have this septic flow that they got. The reason I bring it up to you is because there's no evidence in this case that there were ever dormitories on this site. They never existed. There's not a shred of evidence anywhere in this record, or in the record of the 2012 decision from the zoning board, which listed the uses on site and labeled them as bungalow colonies. And they are not entitled to get approvals for overnight dormitories that pack 90 kid counselors in there. There's no basis for doing it. And in addition, you know, if the Zoning Board of Appeals approves a day camp, they have the power to do that, whether it was correct or not remains to be seen, and that decision is under appeal again. They, that, the 2012 decision from the zoning board is a binding decision on your board, and it defined the uses on site. And in determining that this applicant could turn a sleepy little tennis club into a full-scale public day camp, you still have to follow zoning, and your zoning code under the special permit provisions prohibits overnight residences as special permit uses. And it also requires 100-foot setbacks that aren't met here. So my point about grandfathering is that they can talk about grandfathering all they want, and they've been touting this, this exaggerated flow rate of 9,300 gallons primarily as a way to persuade you that anything they do, I think the latest I saw was like 6,600 gallons a day, which is a very intense amount of flow near a coastal pond. They're trying to show you how modest it is compared to what they could get. But I'm telling you, I have the document here, I'll submit it to you, the Butler document, when I submit some written comments to you. That's the only basis for putting, for putting dormitories here. And the other thing that's interesting is they're putting a dining hall in, and the 2012 decision of the zoning board unequivocally states that the dining hall was abandoned. That was their conclusion. That was their conclusion. You can't argue with it. They didn't appeal it, and that's the law that applies to this site. They're not entitled to a dining hall. And they're certainly not entitled to anything with this camp until you approve it as a site plan review. The ZBA can do all it wants and say, "You're entitled to a day camp," but they can't do site plan review for the structures that they're after. And that's a problem. And it's a problem that they should explain. You know, I was looking at an earlier report in the file, because this argument that the water's not flowing into the pond has really been consistent, that's been their consistent explanation since 2011. And what they're saying in it is that, you know, it's interesting, because I was looking at their hydrologist report from 2011, and he said some things that you don't hear tonight from their experts. One is that the pond and related wetlands, the pond intersects the groundwater, that the surface is exposed groundwater, that there is a connection between the pond and groundwater, that the drainage area is 118 acres, and that inflows to the pond come from rainfall and overland stormwater flow from the surrounding area that finds its way into the pond. That's their hydrologist statement, and I would suggest to you that these are admissions. He's admitting that these facts exist, and that that's part of the dynamic relationship between groundwater and the pond. And then what they do to try to get away from it and verify this, what I have to call this magical theory, that of all the uses around the pond, this use alone doesn't go toward the pond, it goes around the pond. And it doesn't, it just, it doesn't add up. It doesn't add up as a matter of common sense and what we know about the functioning of coastal ponds, and I'll leave that to Dr. Gobler a little bit. But they use kind of a fancy math formula. They take some standard rainfall data from, I believe it's Grobresky Airport, and then they do a calculation where they stretch it out over a year, and they go, "This is the total amount of rainfall in, this is the total amount of evaporation out," and they go, "The net result is that there's more out than in." And, you know, it's a kind of, it's not site-specific, and it's this view from like 10,000 feet high. And then in the same report of their hydrologist, they switch perspectives, and now they're suddenly limiting themselves to the 90-day period that the camp is supposed to operate. P.S., they're already starting to operate in the shoulder seasons, which is another issue that this board has to contend with. And what they do when they shrink their view down to the 90-day period, they say, "The 90-day period is in the hot, dry summer, and groundwater, you know, groundwater flow plus the amount, the fact that the pond level is higher than groundwater means it's not going to go into the pond." And you go, "Oh, okay, well, that sounds interesting." You know, there's not, no real data, and when we talked about this in the FEIS, you know, we had an expert who explained, "You need many more wells that are drilled, they all have to reach the groundwater at the same point, so they get a three-dimensional view of where it is, they need to know soils, a whole bunch of information, they have none of it." But one thing that struck me in reading this report was another admission that wasn't highlighted, like the big, the calculation about the yearly flow, that was the big highlight, more water out than in. What they said was, they buried it in the report and said, "Seasonal variations in rainfall and evaporation change the water flux between the pond and groundwater." And what that means is if you take a year-long average of everything in and everything out, and you just go, "More is going out than going in," that's kind of a macro view from 10,000 feet. But in order to really understand what the relationship is, they're admitting that it can change. So there may be periods of time when groundwater doesn't get into the pond, because groundwater is low, it's a hot season, and the pond water's higher. But there are other seasons when it does. And their whole calculation, their whole theory doesn't take that into account. And that's the problem in this case. And frankly, it defies common sense. Topography is not the sole measure of how water flows, but it's a significant measure of how it flows. Another measure would be core samples throughout the site so that you could get a three-dimensional view of where there are finer soils like clays, because they can divert groundwater and make it run differently than topography. But they don't have any evidence like that. You know, for those of you who were here throughout that FEIS, when they did their drilling, they didn't maintain core samples, which our hydrologist said is absolutely, you know, the rule of what you do when you drill wells to determine groundwater direction. So they don't have the information on the soils. They're just telling you, "Oh, don't believe your eyes, because the elevations to the east of the pond are at 60, and as you get closer to the pond, they're down to 10." You know, this, it strikes me as, you know, illogical and nonsensical. It's like, "Don't believe your own eyes." You know, how do you think, how do you think this pond is filling up? You know? They've conceded, in this early report, he concedes that the pond is connected to groundwater, and groundwater is feeding that pond, and it's also discharging into the nearby pond and other water bodies. But, you know, their answer is sort of, you know, "Who are you going to believe? Me or your own, or your own eyes?" You know? Don't, don't, don't trust your eyes, don't trust common sense, nothing's flowing in here. They don't take account of the fact that when you start pumping massive amounts of septic effluent in that contains nitrates and phosphates, it's not over in 90 days. It's not all done and everything's fine, and that's another thing that they've been saying to you is, "Oh, we're only doing this for 90 days, so, you know, it's not like having 28 houses. 28 houses are much worse." But the fact of the matter is that it takes years for those nitrates and phosphates to get into the pond. And I gave you the example, again, a common sense example, you know, which do you think is worse? If you're doing, you know, one load of laundry every day for 10 days, which has a greater impact? Or in one day, you do 10 loads of laundry? The simple logical point is compressing impacts into a shorter period of time intensifies their impact on the natural features that are supposed to be protected. There are more questions than answers in the discussions that we've had. And the fact that you have the most serious blue-green algae outbreak since we've recorded them is a strong indicator that what they're doing is harming the pond and is going to kill the pond. And they're doing it in the time period when blue-green algae is most prone to occur, the hottest months of the year. So those are some objectives of site plan that you can consider and must consider. And we think that, you know, given the state of this record and the seriousness of this issue, and the threat to the health and safety of the community, that this board needs to slow down, open this up, and have, you know, not just close the record, I'm sure we're going to hear a request tonight, "Let's close the record and submit something in writing," and that's, you know, that's what we'll do. I would urge you not to do that. In part, you know, I'd like to remind you that, you know, as long ago as 1990, when Marty Shea looked at this land, he just, he said that the wetlands consist of a flooded swamp dominated by red maple, black tupelo, sweet pepper bush, high bush, blueberry, wild raisin, swamp azalea, and button bush, and that the wetlands serve an important ecological function because of the nature of their soils and vegetation. They're able to absorb, retain large amounts of runoff and slowly release them to the pond, reducing potential impacts to the pond from erosion and sedimentation. Plays, the swamp also plays an important role in cleansing surface waters, as various chemicals and pesticides can be broken down. Your master plan, the Southampton Town Master Plan, designates the best use of this property as a preserve or a green belt. Their own hydrologist said the drainage area contributing to this pond is 118 acres. But tonight, you know, we get their other expert who stands up and says, "Oh, we're, nothing, nothing's going from our camp there." Despite the fact that the land is sloping toward it, despite the fact that all the science on coastal ponds suggests that they're fed by groundwater and they discharge into surface waters. He's saying, "No, it's not going there. Not going there." Who are you going to believe? Me or your own eyes? It's not credible. It's not credible. And in fact, the place, this location should be a green belt, or something comparable to a green belt. I also want to talk to you, just trying to hit these ideas without going back. I mentioned the fact that a day camp is a special permit, which prohibits any overnight residences and requires a minimum 100-foot landscape buffer provided adjacent to any property line, which conforms nicely to your site plan standard. This applicant should tell you why he doesn't have that and why he doesn't need that. I also just want to, I want to say one thing that I think is necessary to say in this case, and that is, there is reason to put this applicant to the test of producing real evidence that can be evaluated calmly in a deliberative fashion. The applicant started this case with a bad faith lawsuit that violated New York State law, known as a slap suit. That slap suit was dismissed with damages. He had to pay my client's legal fees for doing that. That is a sign of bad faith. That is a sign that this is an applicant who will put his own interests ahead of the interests of the community. Slap suits are designed to intimidate neighbors from coming out. That's why he filed that suit. In addition, we produced evidence that there was fraud in the noise study. That was never contradicted, and it wasn't commented on, I might add, even by the other side. But we had an affidavit from an employee who described what they did, and you may remember, they drove empty buses around. He was instructed by his employer to drive empty buses around. Why? Because they knew in measuring the noise impacts that they were going to be high, and they wanted to suggest that they had more campers on site than they did in reality. That's in the record, it was never contradicted. I've told you about the document they supplied to the Suffolk County Water, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, which erroneously describes summer bungalows as dormitories. That is a misstatement as well. And indeed, the same principal and owner of this camp packed 60 counselors into a four-bedroom house in East Hampton in violation of zoning, fought the town of East Hampton when he was cited for serious health and safety issues, and ultimately had to pay $12,000 in restitution. That's another reason to consider whether, in asking for 90 counselors to be living full-time on a site, he can be relied upon to protect their health and safety, as well as the issue of whether that kind of a use belongs here under your site plan policies, whether that, whether putting full-time residents for 90 people living there pays due regard to the delicate and endangered natural features that are nearby. We, we want you to take more time to carefully consider, in a deliberative way, not when the video cameras are on you, you know, where you have a day to read the reports, about what's going on with this blue-green algae outbreak. It is certainly, it certainly suggests a correlation between the camp activities and this serious outbreak. These blue-green algae produce liver toxins, they've killed pets, and they're harmful to human beings. This is an emergency. And they can't simply paper it over and say, "Oh, the water's not coming anywhere near there." You don't have a pond like this if it's not being fed by groundwater. And it is part of a system that recharges your surface waters. And we are entitled to get definitive information from them, that what they're doing will not harm this threatened body of water. And the only board left that can impose these kinds of conditions is the planning board. You have the power, under your site plan review, to do it. You have the power to reopen your SECR review and get more information, and hear from the consultants at greater depth. Let's have, let's have a real debate here, and not just do it with, you know, last-minute hand-ins. I'd like more time to review what they gave you today, that's entirely new to me, and I would like Dr. Gobler to do that as well, so I hope we can arrange for that. We'd like to submit something in writing, but our hope is that you do not close this hearing today, given the seriousness of this situation and the fact that nobody knew about it until after you'd completed your SECR review. So with that, I just want to hand up some documents to you. I don't know where the, I guess I'd do it on the other side, to the clerk. This, these are, this is an article, copies of an article that I referred to in my last appearance about the harmful algae blooms and the New York State emergency response.
Are you ready for Mr. Gobler?
Yes.
Dr. Gobler?
Thank you for your time, and-
Thank you.
-Dr. Gobler's here.
Hi, good evening. Chris Gobler, Stony Brook University. A few points to make. I'll start out with just reviewing some of the points that I made last time I was here. You've already heard about some of them, but just as a reminder, in September of this year, we had a blue-green algae bloom in Little Fresh Pond that was more intense than any bloom measured anywhere on Long Island. And that's with monitoring, it's been going on for 20 years. This is state-available data, so if anybody would like it, I'm happy to give it to you. But if you don't believe me, go to the DEC. The values exceed anything ever reported to the DEC, measured by the DEC, at over 200,000 micrograms per liter of blue-green algae pigments within Little Fresh Pond. And I had reminded you that, you know, Lake Agawam nearly made front page of Newsday when it hit 75,000 in 2018. And certainly, that number caught the attention of the governor. This is, you know, many times above what's been seen anywhere else. And I'll emphasize that when it comes to blue-green algae blooms in New York State, they're more common in Suffolk County than anywhere else in the state as well. So the fact that we're, you know, we're probably, this may be the most intense bloom ever recorded anywhere in New York State, I'm not going to say that because I don't have that data, but certainly is the case for Suffolk County. We worry about these blooms because they're toxic. We measured within this bloom levels of microcystin exceeding 25 micrograms per liter. This is 60 times greater than the drinking water standard set by the U.S. EPA, and it's also five times greater than their recreational standard. So thankfully, we're not using that as a drinking water source, but it's even far beyond what people would want, just for even swimming within the water. And that's why the pond was shut down to public use following this event. So this is a serious event, and it's an emerging event, it's somewhat new, and so, you know, clearly, the system is changing. We've been getting samples from Little Fresh Pond for more than a decade. We've never measured anything like this before. And it wasn't one sample, I have to say. Of course, it was, one sample triggered our sample, we've been getting samples through the summer, and so this is something that occurred in early September, persisted through over multiple weeks until later in September. So it's an alarming occurrence. In trying to better understand what might be driving this, I'd obtained data from the DEC and looked at the long-term trends. The levels of nitrate have been progressively increasing within Little Fresh Pond since 2002. Again, publicly available data, you can look for yourself, or I can produce it for you. The levels of total phosphorus in the lake are increasing at an even higher rate, and that's probably even more important for these blue-green algae. As a consequence of those two changes, and the higher rate of change for phosphorus, what we call the nitrogen-to-phosphorus ratio, the relative ratio of those two things, is decreasing at a rapid rate, and that's known to- decreasing at a rapid rate, and that's known to favor the growth of blue-green algae. So the nutrient data tells us that this sudden occurrence isn't necessarily shocking. It's a consequence of what's been happening. It's a decadal trend of water quality within the pond. And as I also emphasized last time, we live in a changing world. The temperatures during summer, in particular on Long Island, have risen at a more rapid rate since 1980 on Long Island than they have about three times the global average. It's not that way for the whole year, but it is the case for the summer around Long Island. And so, and that's when these events occur. So these changing trends in nutrients and nutrient loading, along with changing temperatures, is making Little Fresh Pond more conducive to the occurrences of blue-green algae blooms. And based on my observations over the last 20 years, lakes and ponds in the town of Southampton, now that this has occurred, we shouldn't expect that this is a one-time event. In fact, we should expect that they will recur in the future. That's to recap some of the things I explained to you the last time I was here. I want to cover a few other things with regards to what might be driving some of the trends, and we had some, and specifically, think about the flow of groundwater in this particular area. You're probably familiar with something known as the groundwater divide, right? The line that goes across all of Long Island, both of the forks, that creates what are known as watersheds for all of Long Island, and with the idea being that when water hits any part of Long Island, eventually that water's going to make its way out to a coastal water body. And so there are certain areas within which, when that water hits, you can predict based on where it hits, where it's going to go. So the groundwater divide for Little Fresh Pond is to its southeast. So that means that anything falling to the southeast corner of the pond is within the area where the groundwater is flowing from there to the northwest, which is where the iconic estuary is. So it's just a, a big level view based on where we know the groundwater divide is. Little Fresh Pond has a very large watershed. I heard the, the number 118 acres. Research that I was looking at through the DEC, specifically their C-SLAP program, actually had it at 550 acres. So it's a big area of recharge for this pond. And I think we'll note, or probably you all know, the area we're talking about is 350 feet from the pond. So we're talking about whether water that hits the ground 350 feet, 350 feet from the pond is going into the pond, right? And so that, I think if, you know, that, just one way to look at things. But let's just, I just want to keep going and make just a few more points. As you probably know, water, the, the flow of groundwater and whether water is flowing in different directions is highly dependent on what's happening with regards to something known as evapotranspiration. And the idea that during the summer, when plants grow and when temperatures are warmer, there's a lot of evaporation. And in fact, some calculations indicate that from Little Fresh Pond, there's over 100 million liters of water that get evaporated annually out of that pond, right? When does that evaporation occur? Well, we know that there's no evaporation happening now, and in fact, that evaporation period is very condensed. It's really probably happening mainly from June through September, and that's it. So you're losing 100 million liters of water out of the pond between June and September. Now, we don't, we know that the pond doesn't drop in level 100 million liters' worth of water, but rather that water is getting replaced. So there's 100 million liters of water that need to be replaced at that time. Where might that be coming from? I'm going to keep going, but the most logical explanation would be there's groundwater coming in to replace that evaporated water that goes out in that very short period of The USGS, of course, is the, both national and regional experts on groundwater flow, and they have very prescribed what are known as hydraulic gradients. One of the earlier speakers, Peter Lombardo, very correctly pointed out that you don't want to rely solely on elevation to tell you which way water is flowing, because we're not talking about surface water, which would go downhill, but you wanted to look at hydraulic gradients, because the groundwater's following the underground hydraulic gradients of the water. The hydraulic gradients put together by USGS show that from the groundwater divide, that the groundwater is flowing from the southeast to the northwest. Consists with everything we found out before. To bring in some of my own personal experience here, I don't know what I'm best known for, but I do, you know, maybe, maybe it's blue-green algae. But during my PhD at Stony Brook University, half of my PhD studies were actually on groundwater, and that's really one of the big things I studied. It was trying to understand how groundwater affected surface water quality. Turns out, one of my people that were in grad school the same exact time as me is a gentleman named Dan O'Rourke. He was getting his PhD in geosciences. I was in marine sciences. He's an expert in groundwater, and in fact, he was the, one of the lead authors of the study that you heard about earlier, the CDM study. And so I've been friends with Dan O'Rourke for more than 20 years now. So he's the person who did all the groundwater flow study for the recently-released report to Suffolk County by CDM. And we had some discussions about what's known about groundwater flow around Little Fresh Pond. And the answer that he came back with, and he, again, authored the study that was just cut, came out, we just had her reference, is that there were no actual measurements of groundwater for Little Fresh Pond. It was mainly based on assumptions, right? They had over 250 subwatersheds that they had to figure out nitrogen-loading budgets for, an enormous task, I would say orders of magnitude better than anything ever done in Suffolk County, an incredible report. But when you have a report that's that broadened its scope, you cannot possibly get granular on the individual water bodies. And as maybe you can imagine, Little Fresh Pond did not percolate to the surface as being the area that they got all the details on. So they really just made some very, very broad, broad-stroke assumptions about groundwater flow around Little Fresh Pond. But the, the one salient point that did come out of my conversations is that even though that many lakes and ponds do actually flow, the water can flow from that pond out into the groundwater, as we've heard discussed before, that doesn't necessarily mean that the whole pond is draining into the groundwater. And what typically happens is that you'll have one side of the pond that is feeding the groundwater, but as that happens, something has to replace that water that's going out. And that water is likely coming in from another end of the pond. And if we think about where the groundwater divide is, and we think about, which I told you, and the hydraulic gradients put forth by the USGS, the idea would be that that groundwater would be flowing from the southeast of the pond to the northwest. I now would just want to mention to you a study that I did of groundwater in North Sea, specifically exactly one mile from the area we're talking about. And to that, and so I'll, I'll state right now, I'm going to put, talk about information. It's in an international peer-reviewed journal, so anybody can go look this up. It's published in 2003, specifically June 24, 2003. The title of the paper, "Impacts of Anthropogenically Influenced Groundwater Seepage on Water Chemistry Within a Coastal System." So you can get this paper freely available online. Went through the full peer-reviewed process, and again, it's specifically about groundwater seepage, specifically in North Sea, exactly one mile from what we're talking about right now, and how the groundwater flows in that particular area from the southeast to the northwest, one mile away. We measured groundwater via some traditional methods, piezometers, some included, and also chambers, what we call funnel chambers, but we also used something known as an ultrasonic groundwater meter. This is specifically a piezoelectric transducer within a cylindrical tube that's looking at the flow of groundwater based on sonic disturbances. And what this gives you is groundwater flow in two directions, right? So it's not just the net accumulation. And I would, I would argue to say that even though this publication is 15 years old, this kind of groundwater monitoring technology, it may have never since been applied to anywhere in the South Fork. It's pretty rare. And again, this is one mile away from what we're talking about right here. And so over that two-year study of looking at how the groundwater flow, again, the direction of that groundwater flow is very clearly from the southeast to the northwest. And I also just want to emphasize, if you think about the reason that we're talking about, I want to, let's talk about Big Fresh Pond for a moment. We all know that Big Fresh Pond drains, right? Elwif Creek to North Sea Harbor. The water's going out, right? A net movement of the water out, that's undeniable. And as that water goes out, it has to be replaced somehow. And how is it being replaced? Well, again, I'll go back to what I've been saying all along. From the groundwater divide, right, and from the hydraulic gradients, it's going from the southeast to the northwest, right? And so what's to the southeast of Big Fresh Pond? Oh, it's Little Fresh Pond. So you have the water flowing from Big Fresh Pond through Elwif Creek into North Sea Harbor. That water's got, got to be replaced. And again, all signs point to the water from Little Fresh Pond being pulled to the northwest. That water's got to be replaced, especially when you've got 100 million liters of water being evaporated during summer. And as that's being pulled through, it's got to be replaced, and it's got to be groundwater coming from the southeast. So, you know, I think there's a lot of, I'll say there's a lot more data that probably needs to be collected to nail down the precise nature within which that groundwater is flowing in there. But again, what I've done, and the first time I spoke to you, I explained to you what's happening within Little Fresh Pond. In my time since, I've been making an earnest effort to best understand the groundwater flow in this region, speaking to the experts, it said, Dan O'Rourke, Marion Taylor, CDM Smith, who put together this groundwater study we just heard about, and getting down to the granular level of what we know and what we don't know. And so based on everything that I've seen, it's more likely than not that that groundwater is flowing from the southwest, from the southeast to the northwest. Certainly, yes, is the pond flowing out into the groundwater? Yes, but I, the signs are that it's being replaced by groundwater that's from the southeast, and southeast is the exact region we're talking about, just 350 feet away from the pond. So those are the main points I wanted to make. I'm happy to share with you these points in writing, share with you the study that I just presented and described to you. And that's pretty much what I was going to say. If anybody, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So the southeast is the site of the camp, is what you're saying, not location?
Um... Yep, so the southeast is here.
And it's going northwest.
Right? So this, here's southeast of the pond, here's northwest of the pond.
I'm just curious about the blue, uh, blue-green algae. That's produced by nitrogen phosphates?
So in freshwater systems, the paradigm is that phosphorus is the most important element.
My, my question is, the amount of those two chemicals, is it accumulating every few years, or is it a new number each year?
It's a little bit of both, because as I think the speaker earlier presented, that there is accumulation of materials in the bottom of the pond that will flux in, but if you have evaporation during the summer and water moving in to replace that, that'll be contributing also, as well as surface runoff and direct deposition will also. So it's a combination. Yeah, I think that's, that's the same as it seems, yeah.
Is there proportionality between the southwest, or the southeast to the northwest flow in relation to the homes on the pond in turning the amount of, determining the amount of nitrogen and phosphates?
I mean, I think to answer that question, you need to get more granular and have finer detail, but certainly, you know, and, and you, but you could certainly do a mass loading, you know, we know how much nitrogen comes from-
We have to make a decision on this.
Yeah.
In other words, I'd like to know what the, what the relationship is to all the environment that puts the nitrogen and phosphates into the pond. And you did a fine job in telling us, and I, and I believe it, where it's coming from. The question is, in terms of what's producing it, I have to know proportionality between these environmental factors.
And, and so, you know, you need to do a mass loading budget for nitrogen and for phosphorus, and it would also consider the sediments. But, you know, I, I will say that these, these blue-green algae are highly sensitive to phosphorus and nitrogen, and that additional nitrogen and phosphorus is just additional fuel for them to get more intense. And so we've been able to show, you know, dozens of water bodies. If you just, if you tweak up that nitrogen and phosphorus, the events get more intense.
But I, I mean, I, I share John's clarification, wanting clarification. Is this coming from the southeast direction? Is the phosphorus and nitrogen being loaded by what is southeast, and is, does that include the camp? John's question was, are the homes around the lake-
As well as other homes in the southeast?
The pond, are they contributing?
Of course.
So can you give us some guidance about that?
I, yeah, I'd have to go down and crunch numbers and consider exactly which homes that were, that were contributing and other sources as well.
The area below there in the southeast is not, is not just the camp. There's houses on the side of the floor.
Correct.
There are, I don't know, goes on all the way down towards the south shore.
Yep.
The question is, how much of that percolation of water to the northwest picks up the two, I don't want to say pollutants, but two chemicals that drive it into the lake? Is it 1%, 50%? I, I want to know.
I, I don't have that. I can't give you that number right now off the top of my head. I'd have to crunch some numbers.
I think that's a poor number for us.
You have to also be aware of the existing land use patterns in and around the pond over the last 15 years. The area was initially developed in the 50s and the 60s, a little bungalow, one bathroom used, they called camps, used a few weeks out of the summer, maybe the whole summer. Over the last decade, 15, 20 years, these camps have been purchased, greatly expanded. Instead of one bathroom, now you have four bathrooms, five bathrooms. You have onsite laundry facilities. The use has now gone to the shoulder seasons, weekends, and sometimes year-round use. I would invite you to drive around the area, just see-
I'm familiar with the area.
-at any given time, there's half a dozen, you can see this, you know, building permits, roofs gone off, massive expansion of these houses.
One thing that comes to mind, I just will point out, you know, I work very closely with Suffolk County and the DEC and Nassau County, so thinking about how to reduce nitrogen flow from land to sea, and they're doing a lot towards, say, replacing septic systems, for example. And what's very recently come to light is how potent of a nitrogen source schools are. A little off-topic, but let me just finish here. If you didn't know, I don't want to get too detailed for you, but about 75 to 80% of the nitrogen and wastewater flows is from urine. And so there's a lot of use of the bathrooms in schools, and it's all on one particular point.
That, that makes sense.
So, and so my, with my point being, with a camp with many, many users, that becomes a strong concentrated source.
Concentrated, yeah.
But schools, to a great extent, are open at least 10 months and possibly in the summer, too.
Right.
So they, they do have a constant flow into the water.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gobler. Do you have something written that you were going to-
I'll, I'll be sending something.
Can you send a report?
Yes, we'll do it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This issue can be reviewed and decided in a deliberative, calm way where both sides can put in data and you can think it over and look it over in the form of a supplemental EIS on this limited issue. That's why we're suggesting that is possible.
Thank you. I think we can move on now to Marcella Silverman.
Good evening, board members.
Yeah, if we, if we can, I just, just, if someone is repeating something that someone has said, let's just kind of try to move on, because it's, uh-
I think I'm not. I think I'm not.
Okay, good.
So my name is Marcella Silverman, and since 2003, my home is 717 Majors Path. So I am on, my understanding, this is the, the site plan of what currently is, and my, if this is the northern border of the camp, my home is one of the four homes that share the northern border. We are right here, and conspicuously absent from the site plan is the enormous- We are right here, and conspicuously absent from the site plan is the enormous sportsfield. That's right here. I see here the tennis court, I see here the basketball court. What I don't see in the sportsfield, that must be 200 feet by 50 feet, if it's an inch. It's just absent from the site. No mention of it whatsoever. I have been here in years past, talking about noise, but wanted to share two new things with you tonight. The first will be our frustration of the neighbors on the northern border with seeking enforcement of the town code on noise. And if I could, I just made a comment, which four members highlighted of the noise code, not to suggest you're not familiar with it, but I think it might help clarify what I'm talking about, if you each have it in front of you. And second, the mounting misconduct, some of it dangerous, some of it disgusting, of the growing number of overnight staff who are now my next door neighbors. In terms of the noise, there's so much confusion about what noise is allowed and isn't allowed, that I, again, beg your indulgence for a quick read of some of the very short, relevant sections of the code. Just looking quickly at 235, so our noise code is in the town code, chapter 235. 235.2, on page three, says quite clearly that no person or persons owning, leasing, or controlling the operation of any source of noise shall permit the establishment of a condition of noise pollution. And with certain exceptions, none of which are camps. The use of amplifiers, speakers, or other machines or devices capable of reproducing amplified sound shall be considered noise pollution and shall be prohibited at all times. So no noise pollution allowed, no amplified music or other sound allowed, with certain exceptions, churches can ring their bells, schools can have loudspeakers in the yard, we can use our leaf blowers, et cetera, residential construction, et cetera, but no exception for camps. What is noise pollution? It's defined as yelling, shouting, hooting, whistling, or singing from private property at any time that annoys or disturbs the quiet comfort or repose of person or persons in the vicinity, and is plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from such area. And the using and operating of or permitting to be played any radio, receiving musical instrument, et cetera, et cetera, also audible within 50 feet. I think the most efficient way for me to show you the extent of the noise that we've had to endure, and our own frustrations with seeking enforcement of the noise code through normal means, is to just quickly read a short letter we felt compelled to write at the end of this summer to the Assistant Town Attorney. Dear Mr. Harris, as Southampton homeowners, residential properties sit along the northern border of the camp, we're reaching out to request a meeting about enforcement of the noise provisions of the Southampton Town Code. For several years, we have complained to the Southampton Police and code enforcement by phone and online about the amplified voices and music, the excessive volume of screaming, yelling, shouting, chanting, and whistleblowing from children as young as three, and from counselors who urge them to be louder, louder, I can't hear you. All plainly audible at 50 feet from the play areas, basketball courts, and large sportsfield that SCC has located near our property lines, the noise persists throughout summer weekdays. Some of us find respite only by retreating indoors. Personally, as Celeste was one of the authors, I hear it clearly even indoors with doors and windows closed, and more than once the noise has disrupted conference calls for work. Responding to our complaints, code enforcement officers have visited our homes and have spoken to the camp, an intervention that works temporarily at best. They have declined, however, to formally charge the camp with any noise code violation, offering the below reasons over several years, which leave us frustrated and confused. Here are the reasons we've been given. During his visit, the officer didn't hear the violation. During his visit, the officer didn't record a noise level above certain decibel limits, none of which apply in these circumstances. To prosecute a noise violation, the town attorney requires sworn written declarations from four separate households about each individual violation. Authorities were, at one point, we were told, evaluating whether the camp might be viewed as a private school, exempt from the noise code entirely, and pending a final determination by town authorities, we were told, no noise code violations would be issued. When we said a school, it's not a school, the code enforcement officer said, well, they do teach children things, don't they? The noise, another reason we were given, the noise code applies only to residential and not commercial properties. For example, if a residential neighbor is making too much noise, this would all apply, but not a neighboring business that's making too much noise. And finally, we've been told, it's just kids playing. To wrap up, it is not the sound of children playing that prompts our complaints. We like children. I have children. I look forward to more in my life, as my children have children. And we appreciate fully that they can be noisy at play. Rather, it's the nature, level, and persistence of the noise, top-of-the-lungs screaming, screeching, shouting, yelling, chanting, all egged on by even louder adults so close to our homes that disturbs our peace, quiet, comfort, and repose, leaving us unable to read, work, relax, sleep, and enjoy our own outdoors. We would appreciate a meeting to discuss these matters and better enforcement of the noise code. We look forward to hearing from you. We have never gotten a response. Turning to the misconduct of the counselors who now number, I don't know, I guess I have 40, at least 40 new neighbors right near in these little so-called dormitories. We have a, there's a private driveway between our homes and the northern border of the camp. It's the driveway, mine is a flat lot, this driveway serves several houses on it. And the counselors, my neighbor Celeste was woken one night by counselors in that driveway, in the wee hours, drinking, smoking, partying, vomiting. After they left, dozens of cigarette butts were lying on the ground in a wooded driveway, dozens of cigarette butts, as well as vomit. The town police, to whom Celeste and another neighbor went the next day, drove all the way to Flanders to speak to the town police, barely cared. They said they would go over, speak to them, seemed quite disinterested. I'm not even sure that Mr. Jacobs knows what's going on with the young and relatively unsupervised counselors who are now living as my next door neighbors. I had one counselor I met on the road one day, where I said, you know, you guys should at least, you know, if you're there, you should at least pick up after yourselves. I was so annoyed, and his response to me was, that I can never prove that it was them. So that's the kind of response that I think is being encouraged by the adults. And in fact, days later, they were back late at night, seeming to hector loudly Celeste in her home. So to close, I guess I would say that in light of this, the unlikelihood that we will ever get effective abatement of the noise, or the late-night conduct of over 50-plus live-in young counselors, I can only say that no camp of hundreds of children and 50 to 90 overnight counselors should be allowed this close to people's homes. And that's all I have to say. And we would look forward to a response and a meeting with the town attorney if there were more effective ways for us to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can just, as we said, just try to keep them a little bit shorter without trying to restrict you.
I'll be rather short.
Thanks.
I have four grandchildren that go to Mr. Jacobs' sleepaway camp. They've been going there since 2008, Tyler Hill. They love the camp. As a matter of fact, one of my grandchildren was a waterfront counselor this year at the camp. We've given a lot of money to this, one of his sleepaway camps. They are not in residential areas. I love camp. I met my husband in a sleepaway camp. That's one of the reasons we bought this house on a lake. They look forward to coming home every summer from camp, and coming out to Grandma and Grandpa's house, and swimming in the lake. We've gone from a rowboat to a canoe, now to a kayak. This summer, I invited four of the counselors from England in between camp, and then the counselors going back for their post camp. So they were from England, and they came out to enjoy the lake. The fact that they can't go swimming now on the lake, and I'm all for camps, but not in a residential area, not where the people that we spend our summers there, there are people that live there all year long, that are having their lake, their property values decline, because we bought our homes for a clear freshwater lake. Our property values are going down. It is not a place for a day camp. Major's Path is not safe. It is not prepared for the buses. I am a camp person. My husband is a camp person. My children, my three sons, all went to sleepaway camps. That is one of the reasons I bought a house on a lake. My grandchildren are all going to camp. I just stated, my grandson was just a counselor, a waterfront counselor at a lake. But a day camp with 400, maybe 600 campers do not belong on a residential property. I believe in shouting, rah rah, color war, Olympics Day. Kids are supposed to make noise at camp. That's where they have fun. That's where they cheer. That's where they have sings. I know all about camp. Not to disturb your peace, my peace, my house is further down. I admit, I don't hear the noise. I know what counselors do at night. I know what they do on the day off. I was a counselor. Not in residential properties, not near residential houses. A day camp doesn't belong there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You run wonderful sleepaway camps. Stay in that business, put your day camps, not in residential, and don't ruin our little tiny lakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste Frank. So if there's any portion of what other people are saying, just please present new information if you can. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Celeste Frank. I too live along, I too live along the north side. I'm at 735 Major's Path. I'm about 250 feet from Marcella's house, and I'll point to it. I'm right next to the north tennis court. The last time I spoke with you, and I'm just going to be two seconds here, show board one, the old site plan had them changing the old tennis court into a basketball court, and same thing with the basketball court, changing into a different court. If we go to board number two for the next plan, which is upside down, sorry, you can see that there's a plan in place to revegetate part of the north court, but there's a blank area. It's purposely left blank, there's no lettering on it, but that's where the playground was on the site plan earlier. Same thing with the court. So I have to, I have to say, I don't trust the site plan. Like, I'm sure if I were to look closely at it, there would be other things. Let's go to the third one, 2019. I had made a comment over a year ago on the site plan, same comment. So the 2019 site plan, the labeling for the areas around the two areas in question that I'm talking about is written in the blank areas. So it's misleading. So if you were to look to see what's in that blank area, is it a playground? Oh, it says this, and it points here, but the writing is within there. It's misleading. It's, if you look, those areas are still blank. So that's all I wanted to say. I experienced extreme noise, experienced it inside my house. Last time I was here, I showed you guys a little video, and I promise I will not show any videos or play tapes or anything. I know you're all sick of me complaining. But I'm going to read you a quick letter from 2016. This is a letter from my boss in my old company. And this is from 2016, I just, like, I hear noise all day long inside the house. "Celeste, it has been brought to my attention by our clients, Carrie and Phil, that there have been several instances during the daily WebEx calls in which there is significant background commotion on your line. While it is Omnicom's policy to allow employees to work from home during the summer months, this cannot be permitted if our client service is compromised. Please plan to come back to the office for the remainder of the summer. Best, Heather." Now, I no longer work for this company, and that's not why, but I was forced to change my, rest of my summer. This is delayed July 12, 2016. So after that, I did go back to the office to make sure I secured my job. But you can see that it's not just disrupting, like, our lives, and it's not just annoying when I go outside to have a cup of coffee and it's screaming. It's also, like, we do work from home, and to hear it with your window closed, I think is just very, very unfair. And I have made complaints, it's true. I think that over this past summer, I made 26 complaints, and I'm probably known as the town complainer, and I hate to be that way, but I felt that it should be documented in order to, just to keep track, you know, and just to say that the noise really is impactful. And we're really, we're really just asking for a fair compromise where there's at least enough distance between any activities. I often hear the noise when I don't see the kids, so they're somewhere in the interior of the property that's well over 100 feet, probably more than 100 feet away. So I'm not even sure if 100 feet buffer is enough at this point. You know, I have to say, you know, there's so much land, why can't the playground be moved to the other side, or the interior of it? It just, I just don't understand why. So again, not just my enjoyment at home, but it impacted my work. So thank you again.
Thank you. Can we get copies of those things, just Xerox them? No, the cards, the cards.
Oh.
Yeah, just submit them. So Kevin McAllister, is Kevin here?
Yeah. You can just give those to the secretary.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kevin McAllister. I'm president and founder of Defend H2O. By way of my background, I hold undergraduate degrees in natural resources, in biological sciences, and a master's of science in coastal zone management. My professional experience spans three decades, a great deal of work in permitting, done countless wetland delineations, been involved in reviewing and crafting EISs, and certainly mitigation as it relates to permitting. I try to take a pragmatic approach based on my experience, vast field experience in the issues that I take up. I try to prioritize what I feel is important. In 2006, Point West, I had petitioned New York State DEC to include the Forge River and tributaries of Riches Bay on their 303D list. the Forge River and tributaries of Riches Bay on their 303D list, the impaired waters list, essentially polluted waters, for excessive nutrient loads coming from residential wastewater, wastewater nitrogen. This, up until that point, was largely not acknowledged as a significant pollution source in Long Island, eastern Long Island. As a result, that petition was accepted. It was included on the impaired waters list. And then in 2010, basically a sweeping move by DEC included the entirety of the South Shore bays as import, impaired waters. Really, the purpose was to elevate wastewater nitrogen as a significant threat to our coastal waters. On the heels of that listing, I was certainly advocating for advanced innovative wastewater treatment systems. And again, up until that point, obviously, we, we use quite basic wastewater systems. We're discharging into groundwater with minimal nitrogen removal. I became aware of other regions, New Jersey Pine Lands Commission, million acres in New Jersey, obviously Cape Cod, Chesapeake Bay, even down in South Florida, becoming aware that these systems were being introduced and used en masse to, to control a serious pollution issue. The sanitary code that exists, of course, and we've heard that from Mr. Bruin, and listening to the metrics on what constitutes the daily flow, ultimately, you know, within 90 days, we are talking in intense use during warm weather season, warm weather months. So this is an important consideration. You had a question earlier to Dr. Gobler about surrounding residential properties. Of course, they're all contributors, but I, I view the intense use, whether it be a, a large condominium complex, or in this case, a day camp, with the, really the presence of bodies on site in a daily manner. This is, in essence, a point source of pollution. We can talk about the, the actual watershed and the groundwater contributing areas. I have reviewed US Geological Survey information, and we, we really are on a cusp. Dr. Gobler is correct in essentially the, you know, really what's academic, what's moving on the northern side of the groundwater divide from the southeast to the northwest. And when you consider the coastal water bodies, the Sabana Creek and Bullhead Bay complex, as well as North Sea Harbor, these are the receiving waters, as well as Big Fresh Pond, potentially. So we're, in a way, mincing, you know, the issue here. We are enriching groundwater with nitrogen from a, certainly a discernible source, again, hundreds of, you know, campers and counselors on a daily basis. That water is flowing somewhere. The nutrients are flowing somewhere. So ultimately, whether it be little fresh directly, big fresh, or the complexes, the coastal water bodies that I just chaired with you, undoubtedly, that water is moving. I've been a, I'll say, a critic of Suffolk County's Health Department. In, in my work over the last 10 years, I've certainly tried to bring reform to the county sanitary code, trying to improve standards for wastewater treatment, nitrogen removal, again, based on what other regions are doing and accomplishing. I am very pleased the county got serious about this in the last five to 10 years, and they've made, you know, major inroads in this area. But one remaining problem is this notion of grandfathering. And I know that's been tagged here, and again, Mr. Bruin provided the metrics on the flow and, you know, the use, et cetera. You know, grandfathering is, you're basically grandfathering pollution. And I know this board is certainly aware of some of my efforts over the last years, the Canoe Place Inn, Ponquag Manor, which was Allen's Acres. I mean, these are major transformations, again, from an established use, you're basically redeveloping or major expansions that were calling out for advanced treatment. And yet, in Suffolk County's eyes, you know, based on, again, these flow rates, everything's fine. It's not fine. I'm, in particular, try to apply some common sense to the loading, the mass loading, and, you know, whether it be 100 homes or, you know, a larger complex, you know, the focused flows that are high in strength such as this camp use will be. Obviously, these are the areas that we need to strive for these improvements. I, I would call it a bit of a turnstile. And the problem with, you know, the Health Department in the advocacy effort over the last year, two, or three, they haven't really, I'll call it, zipped up the grandfathering clause. It's still problematic. Again, unless there's a major expansion or some form of redevelopment. And, and that just continues a pollution problem into the, you know, discernible future. The turnstile that I speak of, you know, this board has the opportunity now, under site plan review, to impose some requirements for this property, this development, to do better. And I urge you to impose requirement of innovative alternative system for denitrification on site. It's the right thing to do. Passing this opportunity, we'll never come back to it. And then we can deal with, or we can address or talk about another 100 homes or 200 homes. It will not have the same effect as dealing with, again, what I would consider a point source, too little fresh, if not big fresh, and the receiving coastal waters. You know, this is the opportunity, and I just ask you to, you know, seize the day.
Good. Thank you very much.
On the Canoe Place Inn, there was extensive changing of the septic systems. One, on the side where the Canoe Place Inn, the actual Canoe Place was, there was a barrier created within the land, which took out 90% of the nitrogen, also from the surrounding homes. So that was taken. Also, on the wet, on the east side, there was a pumping of liquids, basically urine, up, and that was used to take out, again, all the pollutants, and was taken away. So when we have to, we do have options that are available to us. And it was shown that this worked. Now, I have to be convinced that a system like that could be required, but I must be convinced. Also, when you talk about the movement of fluids, the camp starts in July. I, I'm sorry to interrupt Professor Gobler.
June.
When I, June starts, the last week in June? All right. Let's say 10 weeks, June to September. My, my question becomes, I remember him when I heard his lecture, he said something two miles away, in some respects, may take 50 years to get to south, the Shinnecock Bay. And I know that's not going to take this long, but I, I think we have to understand how much of the wastewater that comes out of the camp migrates to, if it goes to Little Pond, isolated, by the time it gets there. That I would like to know. Is it one day, one week, one month? Is it still mitigating at this point because even though the camp's low, that's moving through the aquifer?
Okay.
So I think these are things that have to be brought to us to convince us what to do.
Mr. Zuccarelli, you had several things in there. I will say that I'm reasonably well-versed in the development at CPI, both with the sewage treatment as well as the, the barriers that were installed. And, you know, my earlier comment about applying mitigation, you know, these are measures that address some problems, some pollution sources. The, you know, the biofilters, the permeable reactive barriers to basically address the nitrogen load, that was in lieu of the bona fide upgrade with an IA system. But we are dealing with, again, the pollution source, the nitrogen from that area. To your question about groundwater movement, as a rule of thumb, it's acknowledged, I believe, a foot or two a day for groundwater flow. Depending on the location, and I will support the need for refined monitoring or wells to really determine, you know, even though it's in close proximity, as I said, we are on a cusp with respect to the groundwater flow. But that water is flowing somewhere, and we are enriching it with a heavy nitrogen load from a heavy use. So whether it's, you know, six months or six years, nevertheless, that, that nitrogen is not being attenuated in groundwater. So when it, it comes up in North Sea Harbor or the Sabonic Creek complex, it's a problem. So let's go back to the source. Again, we are at a turnstile moment where you have the applicant and with your, the board's wisdom, can impose a proper treatment on site. And, and it's the right thing to do, because if you pass this opportunity, we're not capturing this point source again. I can, I can pretty much assure you of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stuart Summitt?
I am Stuart Summitt. I was the lawyer who represented the two offices of the Little Fresh Pond Association, that the applicant sued before the first CBA hearing, immediately before the hearing, for $50 million bucks each. One of them, John Gorman, died last week. He had been ill for many years, and he was ill when he was sued. The courts, of course, ended up awarding us, as I've told you, legal fees, which is very unusual. You have to bring a really terrible lawsuit in this country to have to pay the other side's legal fees, which is what Jacobs had to do. I don't know if any of you have toured the neighborhood. Do you realize what average, ordinary people we are? This is not a, a group of manor houses, McMansions. These are not multimillion dollar houses. We are regular people. Gorman had been retired for, I don't know, 15, 20 years. The other man sued was a special needs instructor in Hampton Bays. This is not a fancy neighborhood. Now, I mention this for a reason. Suppose you tried to punk down 600 day campers and 90 counselors into a fancy neighborhood. You wouldn't dream of it. They looked around at who we were and said we could get away with it. We could do it. Who would buy 17 acres of property with nothing but a tiny tennis camp on it for millions of dollars? Who would do that, except somebody who is heedless and willing to, to just plow forward? A good lawyer would say, put conditions in. Don't buy it until you, don't pay for it until you have the right to do this, the right to do that. No, they bought it first. And looking at us, looking around at us, said, no, they, they won't be able to prevent it. And I must say, they, to this day, seem right. Why? Why is it that the owner of a non-conforming use, which I learned at law school, is tolerated but not encouraged? Why would a, the owner of a non-conforming use be permitted to get this far? Why would the expansion of the non-conformings have gotten all this way through all these boards and occupied all of your nights for years? Why? Why are they entitled? Why are they entitled to your attention that way? Why are we not entitled to the protection of our government? Because we are not in the middle of the estate section. We are not in the middle of the golf courses. We are, we're living in relatively small houses. Mine's 1,500 square feet, I guess, a friend. We need government protection, and we should have been getting it this whole time. You still have the opportunity, and I urge you take it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Summitt. Carla Rich?
My name is Carla Rich. I don't live on Little Fresh Pond. I live on Big Fresh Pond. And what I have suspected about the effect of what's going on in Little Fresh Pond, coming to Big Fresh Pond, has been reinforced tonight. So this is not a happy occasion. And we also had a small blue algae bloom last year. I'm not going to say very much because I think a lot has been said very eloquently. It's almost amazing to me that I'm still coming to talk to you, as, as I have in the past, to the zoning board for, I've forgotten now if it's seven or eight or nine years this has been going on, because it seems to me that based on the laws and on common sense, we should not be here. This should have been settled a long time ago. But so far, we've not been able to prevail and prevent this tremendous overdevelopment. It's especially important now because of the dramatic warming and what has happened to the waters, both fresh and salt, in our neighborhood. So I'm just going to quote something that I read recently that the Pecanic Land Trust recently published. The quote is from Chief Seattle, and he said, "Whatever we do to the land, we do to ourselves. All things connect." Thank you.
Very beautiful. Thank you. Jay Jacobs?
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate the work that you do, and I'm sorry that it has taken nine years that we've been here together. I also want to appreciate, give my appreciation to those members of the board that accepted our invitation and actually visited the camp and got to see how the properties lay out. It's one thing to see it on a map that you're looking at. It's quite another when you come to the property and you can see the distances and the locations of the homes and the locations of the activities. Now, a couple of things that I, I do believe I have to answer tonight in particular because of the statements that were made, and I, I have to do so in a way that I think gets the point, of course, in the context of what this is. First of all, this started nine years ago. I bought a property in Southampton on 17 acres that was zoned with a non-conforming use for a tennis camp slash tennis club slash tennis camp. Now, it also had certificates of occupancy for buildings and the like, and facilities, including courts and all of the other. I did a due diligence. It was made very clear to me that we had the ability to continue a camp that was there. This is not, I want you to understand, me coming into this neighborhood, taking a pristine piece of property that had never been used or had been such minimally used forever, and deciding to put in what has been termed a mega camp. This is not what is going on here. This was a camp. It was at one time a sleepaway camp. Now, I heard it said by one of my happier customers, and I'm sorry that she's left, and appreciated her comments about my, one of my other camps, but day camps throughout Long Island, Nassau County, Suffolk County, are almost all in residential Suffolk County, are almost all in residential areas like this. I own two others. North Shore Day Camp on fourteen acres in Glen Cove, surrounded by neighbors. There's not a complaint. I don't understand why we don't have the same screaming and yelling and counselors encouraging kids to do all of these horrible things in that camp. I have one in East Hampton. There are no complaints. There are no noise complaints in my camp in East Hampton. That's on about ten acres. This is seventeen acres. And it is amazing to me that we have created such a, quite a horrible reputation amongst such people for activities that, to me and for the staff that I speak with, just are not, just are not so as far as we can see. Now, that's not to say, and I'm not going to stand here and tell you, that it's never going to be the case, or it hasn't ever been the case, that maybe there was screaming or there has been noise and it has been louder than we would like it to be. That happens. We had the train. I heard the train mentioned. We have a little train that's on golf carts, put together. And it has, it had a whistle. And they were using the whistle the first year that we got it. The neighbors made a complaint. They didn't tell you, tonight, we've never used the whistle again. Just isn't used. It's a golf cart. That's, that's the noise that it makes. It takes the little children around from an activity area to their dining area. Doesn't make any noise anymore. Wasn't hidden. Then, then I heard, and, you know, here, you know, I've heard about this slap suit now, numbers of times I've come here. And I'm going to set the record straight, as straight as I could set it. Because I don't think that I'm the bad guy that a lot of time has been spent trying to paint me as. But here is what happened. When I first decided to buy the camp, the first thing I did, I went onto the property. I met with Foster Mayer, who was the neighbor across the way, a nice lady who has since passed, met with me. We all met in that driveway, that roadway. And we ended up in Foster Mayer's home. And I had a nice conversation with him. I laid out with him what we were planning to do and asked for advice on what they liked. They didn't like the pool that was going to be put right adjacent to Foster Mayer's property, between the dining hall and his property. I remember Chair LaFaro, I remember being before you and showing you the plan. And Foster Mayer had made the same case. And you asked me if we couldn't move that pool. Well, of course, we moved the pool. There is no playground going in, in the area where Celeste says there's a playground. The playground's on the opposite end and it's marked clearly on the site plan. There's no playground for that. But getting back to the whole context of where we are and where we've been, and, and how I want to just try to summarize this. Where, after I had my meetings, I began to get a great deal of opposition from the Little Fresh Pond Association. So I called the president of the pond. He wouldn't speak with me. I called the vice president, who I hear unfortunately has since died last week. Had a conversation with him. He was a gentleman, but he said, we don't want to meet with you. I said, I want to come and explain what we're going to do. He goes, we don't want to talk to you. All right. What precipitated the suit, so you understand, was the same thing that happened here tonight with Mr. Bragman. He stood up here at this podium and told you certain things that he stated were fact, that were not fact. But one of the things he did say to you, and you all heard it, was that we committed fraud. Now, that's a crime. We committed fraud on the planning board. That's what he said. He said he had affidavits from, from an employee, an employee, who said that we did all sorts of things to defraud you. I will make a note, that employee was, was an employee who was fired for cause, nothing to do with anything that had to do with this application, well before any of these issues. So you can use your own determination on that. You heard from a lot of other employees in past hearings who have been here and spoke about the camp we run, how we treat our staff, and how we treat people and children. And you've heard from parents as well. But you'll have to make your judgments. But he stood here. And he accused us of fraud. Well, what precipitated the suit, and it was a libel suit, was that I had customers, not just from my camps out here on the East End, but parents who send their children to my camps, like that lady sent, her grandchildren, went to my camp up in Pennsylvania, in Tyler Hill, who came out of, from shopping in Southampton. And on all of the cars was a leaflet that accused me of putting an application in, polluting, going to be polluting the pond and committing fraud in the process of doing so. To me, that was about enough. And yes, it was ruled that it was a slap suit. And yes, I was, was penalized for it. But the truth of the matter is, I have to tell you that, you know, there's a limit to which a person is going to accept a battle. I'll discuss the merits of any issue. I'm going to discuss the merits in a moment. And I won't be too long. And I promise, I'll try to wrap it up. I know you've been here long and it's going to be a long night. But merits are one thing. You can get a good discussion on the merits. But when you attack me personally, and you attack my reputation and what I do, and what I said, and comments about what went on in East Hampton, completely mischaracterized. I didn't have to pay the twelve thousand dollar fine. We settled the matter because we were cross suing the town of East Hampton for things that I felt that they did wrong. And, and they were wrong. There weren't sixty counselors packed into a four-bedroom house. That's a misstatement of fact completely. And, and I'm not going to go through all of that because it's not relevant. But I'm going to deny it because the question, or the issue is raised that we don't deny things. Well, I do deny them. And I'm denying it categorically. But what I'm here to focus on right now and that I want you to understand is this. I want to talk about water for one moment. Because really, the core and crux of the whole issue and the, the more or less unfixable piece is water. Sound, we can take care of with landscaping and fencing and, and a whole bunch of things. I know the roadwork that we did is fine for the vehicles that we're using. I, I have confidence in that. But the water, that's been it from the beginning. Let me tell you about the water. So we got a hydrologist. I didn't know him beforehand. This is not my personal hydrologist. I don't have a personal hydrologist. This was a gentleman that was recommended to me as an expert. He came about to do certain tests. We came up at a meeting after he had done the tests, which demonstrated that the water, groundwater from our property did not go into Little Fresh Pond. He presented his case. And Pio Lombardo, who I had never met before, was representing the other side. He represented Little Fresh Pond. He stood up here and he said the same thing that Mr. Gobler said and others have said, that there are charts that demonstrate that the water might be going from our property into Little Fresh Pond, and it needs more testing. He cast doubt on Mr. Grosser's testing. At the same time, Pio Lombardo is an expert and well-known in devising mitigation systems to, at great cost, by the way, to, I might say, to deal with nitrogen and phosphates going into groundwater if there's a problem as such. So I met with him after he had finished his work with Little Fresh Pond. And he came into my office and I said the following. I said, I'm going to, if, if we have a problem and it's true, I want this property and I want to use it in this fashion. If we need to mitigate, because it's demonstrated that we need to do it, I'm going to buy your system. And I want you to design it for me. But here's the first part of the deal. I'm not doing a thing until we do retesting. You do the test. You do the tests and you determine that the water is going into Little Fresh Pond. So here again, he did the first test. There were two tests you heard about tonight. And the impression you got, I think clearly, was we, we let the first test go by because it wasn't, didn't come out our way. That's factually untrue. The first test that Pio Lombardo did established and proved two things. One, the water, groundwater from our property goes westerly and not into Little Fresh Pond in the northwest way. Second piece, and this is critical. The groundwater, when it was tested, was at an elevation lower than Little Fresh Pond. And as you know, water doesn't go up. It goes down. So even if it was going in that direction, it was going under Little Fresh Pond, but it wasn't. He came back and he said, no, you know, well, that may be right. I, I would really need to retest. Now, mind you, every one of these tests, I paid for. Okay? This isn't free. So he then said, before I write my report, I'm, I got to do another set of tests. I paid for it again. He did a second set of tests. The tests showed the exact same thing. And he said, you know what? You're right, we don't need the mitigation system. It's right. He's a decent and honorable man. He could, he could have taken me for a couple of hundred thousand dollars and didn't. And he gets up here and gets disparaged by people who don't know what he did. And the fact is that everybody that you spoke about, heard from tonight and in past nights, and these are well-intentioned people, because there is a problem in that pond that I don't deny. No one can tell you, any more than Pio told you well before he started testing, that there is anything other than what you see on published charts that might show that we influence that pond. But his testing and Paul Grosser's testing demonstrate that we just don't. That's the science. That's the only testing that's been done. Now, I heard a bit about, you know, well, it's, it's a compact use and there's schools and the schools and there's urine, and urine causes a problem in children. I, I don't know about anybody else's children. I've got three-year-olds to eight-year-olds. I don't know the size of their bladders. But I don't know if they're going to be producing all that much more urine than anybody else is going to be producing in terms of the intensity of the use of the property. But I will tell you this. If I put seventeen houses on this property and it's seventeen families with seventeen pools, and by the way, lots of the neighbors, almost all of the neighbors on the north end have pools in their backyard. On the north side, they, they have pools. And you can take a look at, at the, you know, Google Maps. You'll see it. They have pools and they have family homes. We could put that on the property. You would then have fifty-two weeks a year, seven days a week, use of this property. You call about intensification of use. We are using it for a camp ten weeks. Whatever toilets get flushed for the camp portion, the tennis portion is probably another eight weeks. That's it. We're keeping open space. Southampton wants open space. We're keeping a good, quiet use of the property. We're using the property on weekdays between nine and three-thirty. And I, I'm sorry to say, yes, it is children playing. And if they're screaming and a neighbor comes over and speaks to us, we, we take care of it. We've had neighbors standing on the road this year, counting our vehicles and stopping vehicles coming out of, out of, out of the driveway. We could do nothing about it because they were across the street and harassing our customers. That's the way, that's the way it goes sometimes. But I, I have to tell you, we're good neighbors in every single place that I do business. Every single place. And, and I challenged this board and members of the board and members of the town to check out our reputation in every one of the other camps that, that I run. And it's a good reputation. And they're not just good camps, but we're good neighbors. And yes, we've had a couple of complaints that were, were raised by neighbors and the town code enforcement officer came over. And we didn't shut down the place and make it quiet. They stood there and they saw no problem. Not once did they tell us to do anything, change any activity or change any operation at any time of what we were doing. My point here is at the end of the story and I'll wrap it up. And again, I apologize and I appreciate the time that you've given me. But it's simply this. I've been a good neighbor elsewhere and I want to be a good neighbor here. When this thing is done, and God willing, it will get done, I'm going to meet with our neighbors and we're going to work together and figure out ways to make sure that this, this camp, as we've had our camps in other places, similarly situated, is going to be a good neighbor to everybody. And if there are problems, and I can promise you that you're not going to have a counselor do something loud or what have you on an occasion, then, then you come and you talk to us and we'll fix it. And that's what we do in every place that we have. And I thank you for indulging me and I appreciate again the time that you put into this. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer any. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I can't really read this. You live on Thirty-One Hill Street. Po Landris? Here. Someone here living on Thirty-One Hill Street? Okay, we're moving on to Jimmy Silber or Silbin.
That was a good speech to follow. And I think what Mr. Jacobs says highlights the difficulty we're having here because we have experts that he brings forward. We have experts that we bring forward. We have Pio Lombardi, who we both brought forward, who said two different things for two different employers. And we have, we don't know. This is, this, I think what, what Mr. Jacobs brought up here is absolutely right, that this cries out for this board to open up this to a supplemental EIS and for us to get an independent hydrologist or Stony Brook University, or whoever you want, who is not influenced by Mr. Jacobs, who's not influenced by the homeowners in the Little Fresh Pond Association, and open this up to find out, really, does the water go from his camp into the pond? What is going on here? Because none of us can say clearly a hundred percent that we know. After what we've been through with the SECR, we don't know. We have experts on both sides saying different things. And that's the way it is. That's the nature of these things of having experts. But I want to tell you, what happened in September on Little Fresh Pond has shocked all of us because we had a blue-green algae outbreak that you all know about, that we've all heard about in other communities, in other ponds. And we've seen jack russell terriers die from it in Georgia Capon. We've read that dogs have died all across Suffolk County from blue-green algae. And it came to Little Fresh Pond, okay, in September. But this was not ordinary blue-green algae outbreak. As you've heard, this outbreak was measured at two hundred thousand micrograms per liter, the highest ever recorded in Suffolk County, the highest. The previous was in Agawam, seventy-five thousand. So in Little Fresh, it's three times. That is, come on, this is a health hazard. This is serious stuff. And then when we hear Dr. Gobler explaining to us about why blue-green algae is dangerous, we find out that blue-green algae blooms excrete these things called carcinogenic toxins, called microsystems and neurosystems that affect the gastrointestinal tract. Okay? This is dangerous stuff. We don't know if these things get in your body by direct contact in the water, or maybe they're airborne. And if it's a very high humid day, these particles stay in the humidity and can be breathed in by people. But what's important is, for Little Fresh Pond, this was the first time ever that we had microsystems in blue-green algae in Little Fresh Pond. Think about it, first time, highest concentration ever in Suffolk County. First time, microsystems that cause death in Little Fresh Pond. First time, something's going on and something's really dangerous. And it's a health hazard for those that live around the pond. It's a health hazard and it's a major health hazard. Because microsystems, if they exceed point three, they're dangerous in drinking water. If they exceed four, they're dangerous for recreational purposes. And what were they in Little Fresh Pond in September? Twenty. Look at these numbers that we're talking about. This is serious stuff. And this raises the question of what is causing this? And we know what's causing it. We don't need experts to tell us. It's being caused by nitrogen and phosphate that is getting into the groundwater. Nitrogen and phosphate. So that we know is the cause. And now we're looking at an expansion on a parcel of seventeen acres that borders Little Fresh Pond that has some correlation with the water table. We're not sure if all of the water goes into Little Fresh or half of it. When half of the water in Little Fresh goes to Big Fresh and it replenishes, does the water come from the southeast? So maybe half of it comes. But nitrogen and phosphorus are going to increase tremendously on this property. You're going from fifty people to six hundred and fifty people. You're going, you're having counselors sleeping there overnight. You're having adult tennis people playing in the, in the adult tennis club. You're going to have as many as four hundred and fifty children. This is like a tremendous increase. This is toilet flushes. How many more thousands of toilet flushes is that a day? But this is the problem. This is the phosphorus and nitrogen. And in Pio Lombardi's report to us, he said the best treatment, because phosphorus is the killer in freshwater ponds, is the best alternative treatment, the BAT. And we had a hearing before this planning board and we highlighted how important it is to have a system like that in place, where there is a separate tank that collects only the phosphorus. the phosphorus. It's self-containment. It's not the sanitary system that's in place now on this camp. It's a self-contained phosphorus system that Pio Lombardi recommends in his plan, the BAT. And that phosphorus goo that gets collected in this tank is then sucked out by a truck from a waste management company and removed from the property. We don't have that here. We don't have any of that. We don't even have an IA. We don't have an innovative alternative treatment. So we're going ahead and we're going to allow six-hundred more people to flush toilets and we don't even have any of those safeguards. But we do have blue-green algae in the lake at all-time records. Come on, this cries for this board to do the ethical, responsible thing and open up a supplemental EIS. Figure out, are we making a mistake? This is, these are life-endangering, blue-green algae outbreaks. Don't we, don't we owe it to the citizens of this community to tell them for sure that we know for certain this water doesn't, isn't going to affect you?
Okay, listen.
The second point I want to talk about is traffic.
Okay, let me just say that we have seven more people who need to speak. It's running, we are already two and a half hours in. So I think we need to wrap up in about twenty minutes. So if somebody doesn't want to speak because someone else had made that point, that's great. So if you can.
Okay. I just wanted to talk about traffic because this is another big concern of ours.
Yeah.
And in the, you know, this, this to us is a risk for accidents because in the, in section three-thirty-one-eighty-two, which is the objectives of the site plan, as was read before, the planning board has to examine all proposed traffic accessways are adequate in number and in conformance with overall traffic considerations, okay? Well, the traffic, overall traffic considerations that have been proposed in the DEIS were from an organization called AASHTO, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. And they come out with a chart, which is in the FEIS, of site-turning distances, safe site-turning distances. So when a school bus is coming out of the exit in the camp and he's looking on Major's Path, there's a certain number of feet that that oncoming car should have when he sees that bus so that he doesn't have to brake or slow down for any reason, that there's a safe amount of time so that bus can turn, okay? The charts, if you look at them in the FEIS, say five-hundred-and-fifty feet, okay? But look in the FEIS. In the DEIS, I'm sorry, three-point-six-point-two potential impacts. This is from the applicant. However, due to the existing horizontal and vertical curvature on Major's Path, site distance to the south is somewhat limited to approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Well, that's not acceptable. That's an accident waiting to happen. We're, we're accepting that that's going to be an exit for a driveway when we know that the site-turning distance is half of what is recommended by AASHTO. But when you look, when you look at the site plan and you look at the driveways, there's three driveways, and you look at Major's Path, the nature of Major's Path, for all of us who drive it, is that it's curvy and hilly and the reality is, no matter where you take these driveways and put them, no matter where you place them, they don't have adequate site-turning distance. You cannot mitigate this problem, no matter where. So then you're accepting, your acceptance of the site plan is saying, the recommended safety site turning distance is five-fifty, but the best we can get is two-fifty or three-hundred. Is that, is that acceptable? God forbid, there's an accident in two, three years and we all say, "Tee." We knew there wasn't adequate site-turning distance and now we've lost people because of it. I don't think that's the right way to do things.
Your, your point is well-taken.
I will stop here.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, is anybody not want to speak on this list? Lee Frankel, Grant Greenberg, Mark Barregan. Someone not want to speak? Barbara Fair, Sue Christopherson. Okay, we're going to, we're going to now impose a three limit, a three-minute limit, I think. Do you have a timer? Okay. So are you Lee?
Yes, good evening.
Lee Frankel.
My name is, my name's Lee Frankel. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I will be brief, edit things. I'm not a man of science, so I'm not going to talk about the science other than to say that we've heard environmental consultants speak and say that there are slight amounts on west neck of pond, highly atrocic since two thousand and four. Well, I live about a hundred-and-fifty feet, I live on Little Fresh Pond Road, about a hundred-and-fifty feet from Major's Path. I live on that little bit of west neck of pond. I'm not even going to bother with the map. But the simple point is that I'm a year-round resident and there is a difference between having a camp that has thirty people going to a camp that may have six-hundred people. It is noisy now as it is. In the off-season, when I get to the corner of Little Fresh Pond Road and have to make either a left or a right onto Major's Path, I have to sit there and even when the road is empty, when I look to the left, I then look to the right, but then I have to look to the left again and then to the right again because there's not a great deal of line of sight.
Site distance, yeah.
Okay? It's dangerous. And I used to be a New York City cabbie, so to me, it's all sport, okay? It's dangerous. I can't imagine that an increase in the number of people will not exacerbate an already tenuous situation. That just has to be common sense. I'm not interested in the science of it and everything else. Everybody's going to push their agenda. You can't tell me that the bucolic nature of Little Fresh Pond and the reason people live there is going to be helped by having this kind of camp. And I suggest that we do what's in the best interest of the pond and the community and not just to act in terms of what's politically expedient. I remember hearing from other hearings that the public welfare is supposed to be enhanced when something like this is being considered. I don't see it being enhanced in any qualitative proportion, anywhere near as much as it would enhance and benefit the developer. Okay, this is not an altruistic, oh, let's bring the camp and the kids, okay? I hear the noise. I was almost hit by a speeding car during the summer, okay, because of the way people drive and, you know, we, we all know this. So the bottom line is, I just don't think it's right. It's a residential area. I'm also a real estate broker. This does not help real estate values in the area. And I think that the only benefit is the benefit to the developer and there is no benefit to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Grant Greenberg.
Good evening, board members. Here we are again. I wanted to just put a little context into what our neighborhood is like. We purchased our property in two thousand and three. It's a four-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot lot. I can't imagine it's very much bigger than this room, the lot. Maybe this room is three thousand square feet, I would guess? Probably. So a little bit bigger than this room. That's the size of our lot. We have a thousand-square-foot Sears catalog bungalow that's on the property. And actually, most of the houses that are around our side of Little Fresh Pond were Sears catalog houses. They're all about a thousand square foot. Our house is about twenty-five feet away from the pond. Twenty-five feet, I would say it's, it's closer to the pond than that divider is to this wall here. So that's how close we are to the water. And I, I want you to understand, that's why we're here and we care about the health of the water so much. Because it's, if it, if it continues to have green-blue algae outbreaks like this, we can't use our properties. We can't, I have, I have two, five-year, five-and-a-half-year-old nieces and nephews. I can't let them hang out in our front yard at our property if we have, if, if blue-green algae outbreaks continue. Now, I can tell you, Mr. Finerty, I, I know you said that you felt like you had seen development happen in the neighborhood. Since I've lived in the neighborhood, I haven't seen any development happen. No new house has been built on Little Fresh Pond since two thousand and three. And to be honest, I don't think a new house has been built in our area in many decades.
I didn't say new house. I said redevelopment of the existing older cottages.
Well, I, I can tell you, that has not happened. We renovated our cottage in two thousand and five. Most of the other cottages in Gondola Gardens, which is where our property is, have not been renovated. And I would say that having kayaked all around the pond and knowing it very well, people have not made massive improvements to their houses. Yes, I think you, you gentlemen are right. We can all do a little bit more in order to protect the pond. And no doubt, I'm sure at the homeowners around the pond and the septic systems do have a cumulative effect. But there's no denying the reality here that adding a day camp with six-hundred kids for two and a half, three months of the year is not going to have a major impact. And we can argue back and forth which way the water moves. Hell, who knows? Maybe in one season, it moves in one direction slightly and then it moves back the other way in another season. That's what happens at the beach when the waves come in or the tide comes in. The, the developer here only did a three-month study of the groundwater. That's just not enough time for us to understand what the seasonal nature of the groundwater patterns are. And so as people, as people have proposed tonight, I beg of you, we have to have a supplemental EIS here. It's just, anything else would be irresponsible when we live right by the water. There's nothing I can do on my property if, if, if the water goes green. I mean, am I just supposed to like not, not hang out outside anymore?
Mark your time. Thank you very much. Mark Barregan?
No, I'm good.
You're skipping?
Mm-hmm.
Kampala Pati? Kampala?
Hi, I'm just going to be quick. I'm just a recent buyer here since the end of August. My husband and I just bought it right on the pond, on the lake, the end of August, just to find out that there's.
Yeah, can you just?
Kalpana Patil. That's what it's, Kalpana.
Is your, first name is Kalpana?
Yes.
Okay.
And we just bought on Little Fresh Pond, right on the lake. And less than two weeks later, we find out that we can't even use the lake because of the blue algae. I just saw it in the, in the Southampton press. We had a dog that just happened to lick the water, so we're all panicking that something was going to happen to this, to our dog. So we can't live in a panic. We're not unreasonable neighbors. The, the camp is, is way too big. It's too big. And of course, there's going to be an impact into the water. So we're reasonable, where we can work something out, if they can work out where it doesn't affect the waters, fabulous. If you don't have late-night noise where, I heard they come through Fresh Pond to go to the local tavern at night in the, in the middle of the summer, that's disrupting our properties. It's unacceptable. And you can't come into a person that's lived there all these years and come and disrupt it. It's just not right. It's not right. So that's all I really want to say. Haven't experienced many of it because I'm, I'm new to the neighborhood. So I just want to keep it clean. We love the pond. That's all. So if they love the pond just as much as we do, we would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Barbara Fair?
You must all be pretty tired by now. Barbara Fair, I live at one-eighty Todd Point Road. I do not live on Little Fresh Pond. So why am I here? Do I have a dog in this fight? Yes, I do. I and my neighbors and friends and acquaintances, I'm a member of the North Sea CAC, I don't speak for them, but I know their views, and of the North Sea Community Association, as well as my neighbors on Todd Point Road. We're very concerned with the environment. There is absolutely no excuse for us collectively as residents, board members, governors, governance of this town to ignore the threat that's posed by our groundwater contamination. I'm not suggesting that the proposal for the camp is in itself a distinct threat. It is a contributor potentially to a problem. And we must, at this point, I believe, somehow deal with the issue of individual property rights, that of the developer in this case, with the collective need to shepherd our environment and keep it safe. We have to at some point turn the corner and go from incremental pollutants to our environment. Turn that corner and start reversing that trend, one by one, little by little, step by step, decision by decision. And not allow this trajectory to continue the way it has been over the many years. I appreciate the fact that the developers pointed out that Little Fresh Pond is at this present time probably polluted solely, almost solely, due through the existing antiquated, no doubt, septic systems that surround the pond. That doesn't really excuse proceeding again along that trajectory. Those are my views. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't live on Little Fresh Pond. But I do think we should consider the, our responsibility as individuals, members of the community, governing bodies, to say, well, is there a way to halt this and turn this around? Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Christopherson.
I'll keep, I'll keep it very brief. I'm here as, I represent two points of view. I'm an economics professor. I know this found, this town was founded because of the pristine environment. The hospital was founded because the fresh water and air was a cure for tuberculosis around nineteen oh-nine. I think our pristine environment is the most important thing to preserve economically for our future. Making a mistake could be irrevocable. And then I'm also here as a neighbor, a kid who swam in Little Fresh Pond all my life. And I've got some great neighbors that I've known for generations. It's not a neighborhood that's changed very much. And we really, really cherish it. And we want to hope that you would cherish it too.
Thank you very much. The last speaker is Charles Gilio.
I'm here.
You're passing? Okay. Wayne?
For, for the, 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 the.
Yes. What's your last name?
Wilson, G. Y. R. S.
Work company in your front, please?
Okay. Okay, you've got three minutes.
I'd like your indulgence maybe for a little bit more because I want to address a, a number of the issues. My name is Paul Grocer with PW Grocer Consulting. I'm the executive chairman of the company. I founded.
And are you representing, is he with you?
Yes.
Have we?
Okay. I've, I've got a PhD in civil engineering and my, my thesis work was on design of groundwater monitoring systems. I've been working in this field for forty-three years or so, originally starting with the Suffolk County Health Department and working as a consultant for the last forty or so years. Done a lot of work on groundwater and groundwater remediation, essentially cleaning up groundwater issues. That's, that's what I do. That's what I'm, I'm proud of doing. And I, I just wanted to address some of the essentially misrepresentations that have been made tonight. Most of what has been presented here as problems have been addressed in the EIS. The EIS was reviewed by the town planning department. It was reviewed by an independent consultant hired by the town. So that's all been done already. And, and, you know, you've done your due diligence and you've gone through that process. But then just to address new things that have come up. Probably the only new thing that has been brought up new thing that has been brought up is the hazardous algae blooms that occurred in September. These algae blooms are not just a Little Fresh Pond problem. They are a town of Southampton problem. They are a Long Island problem. They are a New York State problem. They are a national problem. They are one of the biggest things that science is looking into right now as to what's causing these things. Okay? I don't think it's just related to a day camp in Southampton that's causing a national H A B problem, hazardous algae bloom problem. So, I think we've gotta put that all in perspective. Certainly a concern. We wanna look at it, but it's not a cause and effect to something that's happening on the, on the shores of Little Fresh Pond. Um, a lot's been said, I'm, I'm gonna, please indulge me, I'm gonna try and go quickly and be concise.
I think we're gonna have to hold you to the same amount. You were never on the speakers' list, so can you, you have just a couple of minutes, okay?
You know, biggest thing is, everything has been addressed in the E I S and the F E I S.
Excuse me one second, sir. I did not hear, are you representing the, the day camp? Yes. Thank you. I did not hear that.
Yes, I, I am the hydrologist that was referred to before, um, by Mr. Jacobson, by Peele, the body and everything else. Um, a couple of quick stuff, the filtering of the samples. When we looked at those samples, there was high total nitrogen. There was low nitrates before they were sampled. The high total nitrogen indicated that there was organic nitrogen in that water. When we went back and filtered it, the nitrates stayed the same, extremely low. That total nitrogen is what came down and confirmed our concern that there was organic nitrogen in the water. That was addressed, uh, in the final E I S. The water levels, we took between the pond and the groundwater levels on the site, the pond in every case was higher than the water levels at every well on-site. And we took those samples four times over the course of a year, four seasons. So, we did that. Yes, we did look at and, and did an analysis of evaporation from the pond and water flowing into or out of the groundwater. That analysis showed, in fact, that water would flow from Little Fresh Pond into the groundwater. What wasn't explained, and, and we did indicate on the first thing, that in certain periods during the year, there may be flow going the other way because of more evaporation than rainfall. But, we did say also that that groundwater flow in that period is probably only 100 feet. And if you go to the, um, slide we have from the model, that essentially shows just that. There's a, a thin red line on the east side of Little Fresh Pond that shows there'd be some periods when there may be flow into Little Fresh Pond by groundwater. That groundwater will come, at the most, 100 feet away from the shore. And that's exactly what is shown in this model. So, the model reinforces, one is the theory that we put out originally, and it also reinforces the data that we got that didn't show any flow from, um, the groundwater into the pond. So, there, admittedly, can be some seasonal impacts of these things. Um, and that groundwater, the, um, groundwater flows, oh, it was, it said it was confirmed with the water quality data. The water quality data has nothing to do with groundwater flow directions. It's just, I don't know. I don't know where that came from. It's, it's, it's just not the case. Not related. There's, there's groundwater flow and there's groundwater quality. They're separate items. Um, let's see. We did have borings. There was, there was no borings. Yes, we did have borings. They were, they were incorporated in the final E I S and reviewed by the town's consultants. Um, the soil conditions were shown. There's not a lot of clay layers there. It's consistent sand and gravel through the area. So, there aren't these little passageways that the water could flow into the pond and, and not. We, we confirm that with that data. Um, Dr. Gobler was talking about the nitrate levels. We looked at those nitrate levels from the state. It's on the state website. There's fluctuation from 2002 till the present day. It's not a clear trend, significant one way or the other. It's, it's within, in a band. And as with any of these things, they, they vary seasonally. They vary when you take it, and they just vary at times, you know, due to different, um, climatic issues from, from year to year. Um, and there is no standard for nitrogen in the surface waters, which is unfortunate, because no one has been able to correlate a certain level of nitrogen with, with algae blooms as yet. It's, it's just, it's just not there. The state D E C has not generated anything to give us guidance on it. So, we're kind of left hanging out there. Um, phosphorus, the state report shows that it's been in the eutrophic zone since 2002, the lake. And as P O says, it's in all likelihood due to the sediment issues and coming from surface water runoff. There is a large surface water catchment area. That's what drives, to a large extent, the water out of Little Fresh Pond into the groundwater. Um, difference between Little Fresh Pond and Big Fresh Pond, as was stated, Big Fresh Pond has an overflow, so the water level is regulated by that overflow. Okay? So, then water does go into Big Fresh Pond, but it doesn't go to Little Fresh Pond. Little Fresh Pond is a kettle pond. There's no outlet there. Essentially, it's a big recharge basin. Water comes down, goes into the pond and flows, has to go somewhere, as we said, and goes down. When you, we have, these days, about 46 inches of precipitation a year, and evaporation is about 32 inches. So, we have a net 12 inches or, or so of, um, 12, 14 inches of net water increase to a, to a place. That's just on the area of the pond. We were told there's a huge catchment area for surface water runoff going into the pond. So, and it rains, it's not just what falls on the pond, it's what falls in the surrounding neighborhood that puts more water into the pond and drives that water down. We were, in fact, a little bit surprised when we got water levels, um, in the pond higher than the groundwater in the middle of the summertime. We, we expected it might be different, and it's still a significant number. Um-
Can you take about just another minute and please wrap it up?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, all the other discussions were about regional groundwater flow. We've got the local data. We've got the specific data for the pond, so we have that nailed down. The only other issue I'd just like to hit on is groundwater flows. Yeah, they, they, they're an issue here. When you take in the seasonal nature, the, the actual flow is much less than what would be allowed even under as-of-right. It's about a third of what would be allowed under as-of-right. So, you put homes there, they're gonna be there 52 weeks a year. Here, we're talking about, about 80 days a year of occupancy. So, uh, that seasonal use diminishes the flow significantly. And then, just open any questions you might have. I'm sorry.
Okay. You can just, you can put some of this in writing, if you will, too, if you want to.
Sure.
Your report. Uh, Wayne, do you want to say anything in closing, or?
No.
Okay. What, I don't have your name on the list, so, yeah.
Jackie.
One minute. Come up. And your name is?
I'm a surfrider, water tester. We check fecal bacteria. You've heard me speak about the importance of having a water quality monitoring plan in place. This is something that's done on every larger development out here. It was done at the, um, golf course, Subanik Golf Course. Uh, but one of the other things where no one's mentioned tonight, something that's been in the news lately, one four dioxin. This is a chemical that comes from household products, industrial products, cleaners. All these septic systems, the I A N D systems, that doesn't take this out.
No.
What happens when you have these systems is the cesspool, then you have the I A N D thing, water flows down. It flows into the water table. Many of the homes in this area, especially in that area, use wells. Those wells, right now, Suffolk County is testing for one four dioxin. Those wells could be tainted with these chemicals. We don't know what chemicals they're using, and this is something we want them to share with us. We need to know this, and we expect them to test the water, so we're not drinking their tainted water from all the volumes and volumes. Um, and I can send you the information. We did the human impact analysis of-
I just have a question, David. Have they eliminated nitrogen or phosphorus from fertilizer? Do, do the fertilizer being used in Suffolk County now are non-phosphate and ni-, non-nitrogen?
I, I don't know what the camp uses. They have different vendors that come and they-
No, I'm not talking about the camp. I'm talking about the areas.
Oh, I don't know.
In other words, when the, when the gardener comes in and landscaper, and he fertilizes-
Oh, yeah, we don't do any fertilizers, I'm gonna like-
But you see, I'm talking about people that are not in your area, that do send water to there. In other words, I just, I know phosphorus was eliminated about 50 years ago from washing, the tide and all that. Has there been anything done in terms of the fertilizer that's used in Suffolk County? I don't know. So, in other words, another, yes, sir?
Okay, so, let, let me finish, actually, if I could.
Yeah.
Yes, please, please finish, and then we're gonna close this hearing, because it's gone on now for three hours.
There are-
Thank you.
Twenty-eight properties around the lake and in that immediate area, 40 residents. I went door-to-door, I know most of those people at this point. Forty residents in total. Fourteen are there all year round. Twenty-six are there part-time, summertimes, weekends. Compared to the 60 to 90 overnight, plus the, um, commercial activity going on, this pales to what they have. And many of us, by the way, have already started the applications for the I A N D systems. So, we just expect to have a good, strong waste management program, just like the Suffolk County Environmental Quality Board recommended, because it is a commercial site. It's, it's much more than what the I A N D system, because it's not gonna drain into the ground. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll send you my census data, if you'd like, because you were looking at it. I'm sorry?
Wayne, would you like to say-
Oh, yeah, I'm an engineer. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Yes, okay. Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, you, you, Mr.-
Just what other information you have, just send it to me in care of the town. Send it to-
Send it to-
Send it to-
And this was presented at, this was also presented at the zoning board, the last one. It was called the human impact analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne?
Well, I have nothing further to, to say. I, I mean, this board has held now two public hearings. Um, really, we appreciate everybody coming out and providing their comments. Um, respectively, I would have to submit that most of the comments, we not only heard at the October meeting, but we heard during your E I S process, we heard during all your public hearings before. Uh, all those comments were duly acknowledged, put into the final environmental impact statement, and they were discussed and resolved. Nonetheless, I would ask that the board, at this time, close the hearing, as it is your normal policy, a 30-day written comment period where everybody can provide comments. We certainly would want to be able to do that. Um, I heard Mr. Bragman ask for, uh, time to submit comments or writings as well, um, but that's my request for the board at this point.
Okay, we are going to close with the 30-day written comment period, so please get your comments in to the board, okay, so that we can move forward and examine what we need to examine here.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Robyn.
Second by Robyn.
In favor.
Opposed.
Extentions five in favor, two absent.
Thank you very much.